Okay, good evening, everyone. It's October 17th, 2022. This is the GOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards for Conduct. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:02. I am Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor. Also in the room...
Mike Eddington, co-chair, line you supervisor.
Guy Wade, part of it.
And online, we have Amanda.
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
And Jennifer.
Jennifer Wingard, Roads and Utilities.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Are there any disclosures this evening?
I might add one on the nonprofit. My wife works for Four Valleys Community School, and so I am... Let that be known.
Thank you, Guy. And we did have that as our October 5 meeting disclosures. And it was ruled that it's not a conflict. Thank you. Any other disclosures?
I have two disclosures. I am a supporter of multiple community groups in item number five, the nonprofits. And I've been a volunteer in the past for, sorry, for Four Valleys. I know we've come back before. And in item 18, my wife is, my wife works for Pomeroy Resorts in Sparta.
Oh, thank you, Mike, for item number five, in the nature of Girdwood and small town involved in nonprofits. I do not rule that as a conflict. And number 18 is new business, and we'll be hearing that for the first time. Not a conflict for discussion tonight. Any other disclosures, Amanda?
Thank you. I am an employee of Eliaska Resort, which has at least one item, I think 18 and maybe 14. And then I volunteer for the Four Valleys Community School. That's it.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you. I do not rule that any of those are conflicts tonight. And Jennifer?
Just same thing as before, and as everybody else being involved with these organizations, but nothing in particular.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I have a disclosure, Mike, if you would take the chair.
Take the chair for this item. What's your disclosure?
Same that I did last month for Four Valleys Community School, volunteering and teaching, and the Art Institute, teaching and volunteering in the community.
Okay, we're the same as before. Let's see, as we've just shown in column, the tension, the discipline for all of us.
Thank you.
You have the chair back.
Okay, thank you. Agenda revisions and approval. Anyone move to approve?
Move to approve tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mike. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. And I have, I would entertain a motion to move the order of old business to item 12 being first because the guest, the meeting member in the audience, has a very early obligation in the morning.
I will also move item number 12 to proceed item number five.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Guy. Any oppositions? Okay, thank you. Item 12 will be first on old business. October 5th, minutes, approval, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve it.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Guy. Any oppositions for October 5th minutes? And September 27th, special meeting minutes, approval?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you, Mike. Any oppositions? And finally, the September 19th, regular meeting minutes, approval. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Guy. Any oppositions for the 19th? All right, moving on to announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Two Gatch Electric outage is October 20th. They have maintenance requiring this power outage from 11:00 p.m. to 5:30 a.m. And kids and cops at the ice cream shop will be this Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Thank you, Carol Makar, for that. And introductions, presentations. Number one, update of housing developments in Girdwood, including Holden Hills. Update from the Holden Hills Housing Advisory Committee. Do you see Emma online, I think?
Yes. Hi, Brianna. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. I would like to give the update from the committee. We have not met since I recently spoke at the land use, but we have received the letter back from Adam Trombley. And we were not able to make any headway on any of our requests. And because of that, we have decided as a committee that we will ask GBOS or we will recommend GBOS to not support the Holden Hills development as it stands. And we still do have one meeting left. It's this Wednesday. At our last meeting, we decided that if we were to get a letter with no, with no agreement to anything, we knew that we would not support it. So that's to the most that I can state today. On Wednesday, I believe we will vote, and at that point, we'll each give our individual opinion on yes or no, and we'll also share that. But bottom line, the committee worked really hard. I think it was a great process. We all really had a respectful interaction with the public, with each other. And I think we can be proud of ourselves, but unfortunately, it didn't make much of a difference. And so I think the good news is that there still seems to be a lot of discussion throughout the community and even on the agenda tonight to include community housing as a new power. So we're encouraged by that. Finally, what we, two of us from the committee have been a part of a survey that's been circulated. And the reason for this survey is just to gather current data so that we can continue to let HLB Advisory Committee and the Assembly understand Girdwood's position. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Emma. Any questions from the board? Guy?
Thank you, Emma. So is Advisory Commission meeting before our next GBOS meeting?
Yes. We are meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m., I believe.
I'm sorry, the HLB Commission. Do you know if they're meeting to vote on this before our next GBOS meeting?
Do they meet?
I... There you go.
GBOS meets before?
Yes.
Advisory Commission. The commission's on the 27th, the last Thursday of the month.
Okay. We have a meeting with the municipal manager next week before the 27th, which is the HLB meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mike?
Yeah, comment question. Was the, was the response from Adam posted on our website, or is it in the packet? I didn't see it in the packet, but I may have missed it because it was pretty short.
Well, we... Go ahead, Emma.
Go ahead. Oh, I was gonna say, I think we were planning to post it when we got it on, when we met again on Wednesday, but I could be wrong.
We heard that there was gonna be a revised letter coming.
Okay. And so we had heard... What I thought.
Sam, that that letter should be coming. We have not seen that letter arrive yet.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that I don't disagree with Emma's characterization. The way I read it is that he answered questions we didn't ask and didn't answer the questions we had asked. So I would, I know I've communicated with him since, asking if he, if he can expand a little bit and address the questions he was asked. That may be in the revision.
We heard it's a request to the developer for him to revise that letter as well.
So, yeah, I mean, that, just my comment, I'm not sure if that's the final response we're gonna get from Adam, but independent of that, I think the, I'm very proud of that, I think the committee's done in general, definitely the Holden Hills Housing Advisory Committee has done. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
I think you as well.
Of course, of course. Thank you for all the time and everything that you all do. I would also, if it's possible, I'll include in the chat the link to the survey. If that's something we can have in the minutes, that would be great.
Sorry, for GBOS meetings, we do not have the chat open just because of having open dialogue here we learn. So send us the link, and then we'll get it posted with the minutes.
Copy that. Thank you.
It looks like we have a hand. Linay?
Hey there. Sorry, I signed on a little bit late, so I missed Emma's presentation. But I'm wondering if there was dialogue about GBOS putting forward a letter to HLB and then, I guess, onto the Assembly before this vote happens on the 27th, saying that they no longer support the project if amendments are not put in? Because it's my understanding Trombley's letter said that setting aside money and land was not a legal option.
Yeah, that is correct. We will be asked, we will be sharing our recommendation to not support this as it stands and to request it for the sake of the community. GBOS does the same.
And did everybody decide that that's gonna be taken care of before the 27th?
So the next time we meet is this Wednesday, and that is our final meeting. And I believe that's the number one thing we're gonna work on, so yes.
And that includes GBOS, not just the Housing Committee?
There is.
Yes, we have a response, and one question at a time, please. Mike?
Yeah. Certainly, I don't know if you've heard the earlier discussion. We've been advised, I think several people have been advised, that there is a revision, a revised version of Adam Trombley's letter expected. But the HAC is a meeting on Wednesday. We have a meeting, GBOS has a meeting next Monday with the municipal manager. And this is obviously a topic of discussion, and we can take an action at that meeting if we choose to. So we have an opportunity to respond and have a formal response before the HLB meeting. But, you know, we will obviously keep communicating with the Assembly directly as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else from the board? Or anything else on number one?
The other item on number one, there's two things, actually. The, there was an HLB and Advisory Commission working session last Thursday. The show was very interesting, brought up quite a lot of issues and questions and opinions and thoughts and various other things. One thing that jumped out at me was, I think it was very clear what the limits of HLB is. So we'll be discussing that a little bit later tonight as well in the context of one of the items. So I'm not going to get into that much detail. But the other thing that was really useful was, one of the documents produced for that was a response for planning, where planning explained the other, apart from the, there would be a platting action, which was not covered. Planning sees at least two applications coming through planning or expects at least two applications coming through planning, and that may be more. But it does lay out when the sort of time scale of that and when they will be going through public process. And then, of course, we have the Assembly action for the land disposal as well. So there's at least, you know, there's the HLB action plus at least four other public actions during the process of the next few months. So the, the letter, again, I think we should, we should post the memo from, I think Ryan Yale, to, that was in the HLB, at the HLB work session. It'd be good to have a link from that to on our website, so we have that information out there as well. Okay, copy.
Thank you, Mike. Are you there? Don't hear you, Jennifer.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yep, there you are.
Is that better? Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. I think the answer to Guy's question might have gotten a little confusing. I just wanted to make sure that the board and everybody attending is clear that HAC is set to vote on this on the 27th. That's what's happening at that meeting. And so that is, as Mike just detailed, there are further steps, but the first step of this is being voted on on the 27th. And while we do have another meeting with the municipality, I don't know that that, you know, I would assume that we're on board with what HAC has decided because that's not really a time when we can discuss as GBOS what we think we should do. That's a time when we present to the municipality what we already think, right?
I disagree with you on the last part there, Jen. I believe that that's a GBOS meeting, and we can choose to take action if we decide to as a body at the meeting on Monday.
Guy?
So, thank you, Jen. Jennifer, I, so do we need to put anything formally written before this meeting on the 27th? Or for a meeting with the Muni prior to that?
What I would expect is that because Holden Hills is an item of, we'll confirm it later tonight, but it's at least an item on the draft agenda, we will be addressing that. And I hope that Adam Trombley is actually in attendance at that meeting, that we will probably get an answer to various questions. Because if we wish to get our formal response in front of the HLB Advisory Commission by Thursday, then Monday is the only time we can act. But I think we will get our questions answered in that meeting, and we can choose to respond, we may decide to choose to respond in that meeting, and then have a formal response, which would be in front of HLB by Thursday.
Then we can meet either at that meeting or post meeting.
Well, we're actually in a meeting at the time, so I think we can definitely act at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we have Jennifer again?
Sorry. While it is true that we can act at that meeting, that is not typically a good place to hash things out because it is a meeting with the municipality. That's not a time for conversation as a community, which is, to clarify the point that I was making about that meeting. So I would, I would still hold that we should have some idea of what we think as a community going into this and not be hashing it out in front of the municipality.
Thank you, Jennifer. Guy?
I do agree with that. I don't know if we can come up with that or verbiage today, but I do agree with that.
I was responsible. That makes sense. I was confused by the question. I thought the question was whether we as GBOS can act, and we can and probably will. If the question is whether there's a broader, different meeting with the community, then that obviously isn't the best time to have that general community feedback. But I don't think there's a lot more feedback we're gonna get. I think it's pretty clear where the community is myself, unless there's some major change in the response from HLB in the next week.
Thank you. We have a question in the room. Please come forward to the microphone a little bit.
This is Matt Schrechter, resident. Is Adam Trombley planning? When are you expecting a letter from him again? No idea.
I haven't...
So he's...
Have you given a date?
He's basically gonna run out the clock, then?
Well, I mean, except we have a meeting next Monday, so we...
But you won't have anything to write?
If we don't have anything writing, that answers our questions.
So... He's already presented one, one letter.
Right, tentative, right? But he said he was gonna revise it. So he's basically just dragging us along. He's just basically showing us along to this.
I would characterize it differently. I'd say we have got a response.
Yeah.
If that response gets updated, then we'll have a second response, which presumably will replace the first.
Can the GBOS? Okay, so if the GBOS, then why doesn't GBOS go ahead and prepare a statement basically based upon the findings of the Holden Hills community, which basically says no, and just work on something in writing now?
We will get that response from the HAC.
And then how quickly will it turn around?
We can have something to discuss on Monday.
On Monday, okay.
Yeah, which is the next scheduled meeting.
And then what's the process in terms of just going through with the assemblymen or assembly persons and saying, what's the lobbying process look?
That will be obviously following that because there is no date set for the, for any assembly action or hearing yet.
So how does...
There is, however, a tentative work session on Holden Hills, which is scheduled for November, first week of November, I believe. I'd have to confirm that.
So then effectively between, effectively by the first week of November, you need to start lobbying efforts?
The first weeks of December, there will be, at least currently, there is a work session scheduled for it. It may get delayed.
With all the assembly people? I'm just trying to make sure, how do the assembly, what is the process by which all the assembly people will be educated as to what all the issues are?
Right.
To hopefully make a decision that best serves the community? That's the...
That's the purpose of the work session.
Okay.
Okay. So if typically the work sessions for the Assembly are not scheduled until there's an actual piece of action for the work for the Assembly to do.
Okay.
But in this case, they know it's coming. So it's been tentatively scheduled for early November. It may get pushed back a bit, but there will be a work session before anything comes in front of the formal action. I've had that commitment from the chair.
Okay, will there be public notification of when meetings are had with assemblymen?
Yes, there's always. So for any public meeting, yes, there's always...
Okay, well, there'll be notification of private meetings if you're...
I doubt that. I mean, I get phone calls, you know, in prime days, and I'm sure other people do as well. They're not, but it shouldn't be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have one question online. Betsy Connell?
Connor? Section, had a question. It's for any board members or members of the audience who didn't listen in to the HLB work session, the HLB Commissioners Work Session. Two things that I think should get pointed out. Number one, the HLB staff incorrectly reported to the Advisory Committee that the number one thing they should be concerned with is money, how much money they can make on the Holden Hills project. One of the commissioners then pulled out some MOA, you know, guidelines or rules or whatever you call the AOC... And said that, no, you're also supposed to look at benefit to the community and if the community has enough resources and that sort of thing as well. But the report from the HLB staff said, you should be looking to see how much money we can make on this deal. That's the first thing that should be bold, should be aware of. The second thing that people should be aware of is that throughout that whole HLB Commissioners Work Session, which Adam Trombley attended, he did not once mention that there was a HAC committee, nor that they had been meeting, he and Cotty and the committee members had been meeting, or that there was anything that they were trying to resolve as a group. None of that was mentioned at all.
Thank you, Betsy, for your comments. Anything else from the board? Guy?
I do have one more. So before the Commission meets again, HLB to vote on this, is there a process for GBOS to? I think they know what, they know what we're, they know what Girdwood thinks. Do we need to submit anything formal as far as a letter? And can we do that before the Commission meets? Irregardless of what the new letter from Adam Trombley, you know, we could pull it at that point, but can we meet or, or put together some kind of, something official before that meeting?
Yes, I mean, I'll, I will definitely have something that I think we could discuss next Monday. By Monday, I think any questions, we'll have had our questions answered, or we won't have had the answers at all. But I think we could prepare something based on the information we have so far, and we could discuss revisions to it if anything comes up during that meeting.
Can we as a board submit like an official resolution or?
Yeah, a resolution would probably be the format.
Okay.
Or maybe a letter, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But the other thing I should point out is, HLB Advisory Commission is again advisory, it's in their name, and they're just parallel to us. They're not, it's not that we have to channel anything through them. We have a direct line, so it's the elected body for the community. But we've already sent them our previous letters, so we will send them any other activity.
Betsy, is your hand up still? Do you have something different? Okay, Jennifer?
I just wanted to reinforce what Guy was saying. I think it's important that we do come out as formally opposing this. It doesn't, regardless of whether or not we are parallel, and regardless of the other things we've done, we have kind of a new, we've reached a new stage. And I would like to recognize the work that HAC has done and all the negotiation that they've tried. And it seems to me like a way to be respectful of that work is to reflect it to the HAC. And as Betsy mentioned before, they're not even aware of HAC. So I do hope that they're aware of GBOS, and we are the body that would be making a statement for the community anyway. So I just think it's important we make it, even if we feel like we've made it before.
Thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate that. Okay, Linay?
Just a little note, Terri Sherwood called me. She's trying to get in on the meeting and waiting to be let in.
She was here previously. I don't, we don't see her in the waiting room.
Okay, I'll text her and let her know you said that.
Anything else for number one? Okay, thank you, everyone, for discussion on this, and we look forward to Wednesday's Advisory Committee meeting. Number two is legislative report. I saw Roger Holland on, I think. Is anyone from Holland's office or Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, this is Roger Holland. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have not much to report. The legislature's been out for five months. We're in campaign season now. Mostly, I'm just tuned in for informational purposes on Girdwood and Holden Hills. And, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them now, or you can text them to me at 351-8277. I see y'all had your chat down. It looks like your chat's under control tonight, but 351-8277, if you think it's not an issue like everybody would be interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, for being here tonight.
Not a problem. Wish I could be there in person, but I was tracking down the, that's the one news I had to report. Yes, my truck is still stolen. So trying to track it down in Anchorage.
I read about that. Well, we'll keep a lookout in Girdwood, too. James Kaufman, I presume, is not online then. And for Assembly members, both Randy Salt and Suzanne LaFrance have other obligations. Oh, okay, I'll go back to Kaufman's.
I had a question.
I'm sorry.
Linay, your question for Holland?
Correct.
I'm sorry about that. Go ahead for Mr. Holland.
Mr. Holland, can you please tell us what your position is on the Holden Hills project? And if you are in agreement with the community, how you can assist us in getting word to those who are voting on the project of your opinion, I guess, and ours? Thank you.
That's, that's why I tune into these things, because I actually, when I first heard about Holden Hills, I, you know, it's, at first blush, I kind of thought it'd be a great thing for Girdwood. And, and mostly, I'll apologize to you. I'm, I'm just kind of listening right now, just seeing what happens. I mean, you guys are the ones that have to live with it. And it's, I know people talk about looking for, you know, real estate development, affordable housing. And it's, that's all I'm just trying to do is, is keep track of what's going on with the local politics and business with Holden Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Matthew, I'm sorry, I did not recognize you. Matthew, we're happy to have you join and give us your update.
No problem. I, I'm on a different computer, and I can't figure out how to change my name, so that, that probably doesn't help. But my name is Matthew Harvey, and I'm chief of staff for Representative Kaufman. I, he wishes he could be here, but there's just scheduling conflicts that pop up, unfortunately. But I'm gonna echo a lot of...
You're muted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna, but I'll echo a lot of what Senator Holland just said with the, things that kind of wound down a lot with the governor's not signing any, any more new bills. But there is one thing, and that's Legislative Budget and Audit is a committee which we're a part of. And they just released their report on the... And they just released their um report on the Alaska Permanent Fund Corporation investigation on the firing of Angela Rodell. And the really, the moral of the story is there wasn't um evidence found of the executive branch kind of, the executive branch wasn't involved in any of those decisions. And really, it was just a a big personality conflict. That it, there was various different personality conflicts with different people on the board and the A P F C executive director that kind of came to a head. And and it was kind of found that the Permanent Fund Board has the authority and where with all to do that. There were some places where they didn't totally follow the procedures, but it's still found to be within the 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 scope of their powers. Um but that was one big thing. And then we have another L B and A meeting coming up the first weekend of November that will be streamed as well. That's really all I have. And then here is.
Thank you, Matthew. Do you have a question?
Just one question or comment. You said the um that the board wasn't, had no dealings or with the executive. But are two members of the board or the commissioners? So they are members of the executive?
It was it was found that the the executive branch didn't have any influence over that hiring, that firing decision.
Okay, even though two members are members of the executive, they're both, they're two members of the board, our commissioners, aren't they?
Yeah, and and I mean, I will say the report was, they did a good job. One of the big things that we wanted to avoid was having political bias in in the report. And the report was really good about not relying on any circumstantial evidence or things that wouldn't really hold up if you were to officially accuse somebody of something. So they they did kind of have a pretty high standard for facts. And uh they laid out, I I forget the number, but there's a number of of, you know, what they fit their definition of facts. And so there there is a little bit of circumstantial things that they could point to um with them being, you know, two members being a part of the executive branch, being commissioners. But there was nothing else that wasn't circumstantial evidence or that 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 met their standard that they could call executive influence over that firing decision.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And thank you for attending. I did recognize your face, so that helped out for.
For having me, guys.
Okay, on to assembly members. Both Suzanne and Randy sent us their updates because they won't be able to attend tonight, so I could read through some of them or anyone else wants to, anything. Um Suzanne said that to check out their new assembly page changes because someone did work on um revamping a lot of the web pages there. So they have a newsletter that you can sign up to receive more information from the assembly. And their next regular meeting is Tuesday, October twenty fifth. Their budget season is underway, and the mayor prepares the budget, submits to the assembly, they review and make amendments to vote. So they receive the budget on September thirtieth, and it was introduced at the October eleventh meeting. And their first work session was held this past Friday on the fourteenth, and then their other work session will be this Friday on the twenty first. So they'll have two public hearings, October twenty fifth and November ninth. And then the amendments will be November tenth, but hopefully an approval on November twenty second. They have the full timeline online on a municipal budget one-on-one fact sheet. She went on to talk about the homelessness updates, and their last regular meeting had uh several approvals for what next steps they are taking. I'm not sure how much to read of this. Um and then Randy also said similar updates with the budget season and the cold weather sheltering plan. And uh if anyone has any questions, I can try to go from the notes that they sent.
We could include those in the minutes, too.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh next, we have Andy Holloman from Anchorage School Board here.
I don't see him.
Okay, I'll go to supervisor reports. I'll go to my left with Mike.
Um I've already covered, I think, the um various things I've been to in the last few weeks. That's been the majority of my time.
Thank you. Guy, do you have any reports?
I do. Um Chief Weston updated me on some things, just some notes. Um we do have seven new fire department members. Partway through training, good news is five of those are Girdwood residents. So yeah, makes a huge difference. Um four hundred and five calls for service this year to date. And um and then eight members of the Girdwood Fire Department spent the day, I don't know when, was it this week, at Girdwood School? Um just for Fire Prevention Month. So a little outreach on their part, which is very cool. And then another note, and I do wish she was here because I I think she could give more credit than than I can, but I I I would like to recognize Kyle Kelly. Chief Weston wanted to give him the Fire Prevention Community Partner of the Year. I think this is for primarily everything he does. But last year during the October, our Halloween flood had been, I I don't know, I got emails twenty-four hours a day from Kyle. And it was like, do you sleep? Do you know what what's going on there? And that was for, you know, that week and a half during the whole thing. And then to keep everybody informed, you know, the fire department, the police and everything else, I think I'm sure that's why Chief Weston wanted to recognize him. So much appreciated.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's just, you know, you're, I mean, the time you've been in for that was extraordinary. Like I say, every time I open up my email, there's like, wow, you know, with you and the fire department, police departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you, Chief Weston. Thanks, Kyle. Hope that has a great place in your office. Uh and online, I'll go with Amanda. Do you have an update report?
I don't. We did not have a P S A C meeting this last month. Thank you.
Okay, and Jennifer?
Um everything is gonna be, I think, covered later in the agenda.
Thank you, Jennifer. And for my report for Parks and Recreation slash Cemetery, there is more in the report or more in the agenda this evening for Cemetery, but uh the Girdwood Trails Committee had their regular meeting and finished their amendments they have been working on for a long time. And tomorrow's special meeting is not taking place, so the next meeting will be in uh regular early November. And I'll move on to the service provider reports. Five minutes. Is Chief Weston on the phone or she's not here?
She's not here.
Okay. Do you have anything, Kyle, for Chief Weston?
No, uh the two things they are working through is they're working on uh new apparatus purchases. So they're getting two chief mobiles, uh one for Chief Weston and then one for Deputy Chief Garhart. And so they have put those out to bid, so they're currently on the uh website, the purchasing website for bid there. And then they have finished and uh um signed the contract for a new Rescue forty-one. Um that's the first apparatus on scene for most major accidents. Um so that is being built uh by Rosenbaum, and we hope to see it here by next spring. Um so uh those two projects are moving forward, which is great. So we should see bids for um the new chief apparatuses uh probably in about a week and a half.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions about that? Okay, I see Chief Ashay's on call. Chief Ashay, welcome.
Thank you. Uh just a real quick brief. Uh I haven't emailed this to Kyle yet, but I have some updates on some stats I was requested. I'll just go over this month's, uh last month's stats first, and I'll just give you update over to summer stats. For the month of September twenty twenty-two, uh Girdwood Service Area had one hundred and twenty-one calls for service that we responded to, of which thirty-five were traffic violation and traffic stops, forty-nine were various different types of security checks throughout Girdwood. Uh four were suspicious activity, two were property crimes, sixteens were assaults and disturbances, uh six were welfare checks, and nine were other calls, including wildlife type calls. So it was a total of one hundred and twenty-one. And overall, for the summer itself, uh starting in May, uh total calls for Girdwood that we respond to was one hundred and ninety-seven. In June, one hundred and seventy-eight, in July, one hundred and thirteen, and in August, one hundred and forty-three. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and email Kyle basically from beginning of the up-to-date certainties of all calls for service we respond to in Girdwood, to give you an idea. A couple other things, as previously mentioned earlier at the meeting, we are having a Cops and Kids event at Ice Cream Shop this Saturday, I believe from ten to noon. Uh we'll have several police officers there participating with that. Additionally, I believe it's on the twenty-eighth, Whittier Police will be participating in the trunk for trunk or treat event at the Girdwood School. We'll have an officer or two up there handing out from siloing sticks or glow sticks to the kids as well as other non-healthy items for them. Um and with that, the other, the primary thing we did, it started from, I believe, the last G B O S meeting, uh requests were a little more early morning uh traffic enforcement. So periodically throughout the last month and a half, we've had officers from anywhere from six o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock in the morning, trying to maintain a high visibility traffic enforcement on Aliaska Highway, well as our other uh traffic enforcement areas, Crow Creek Road, uh Timberline, the airport areas, as well as Aliaska areas. So that's pretty much just what's going on right now. Uh one additional thing uh regards to the Girdwood Service Contract, I know the muni reviewed the the tentative or proposed contract. It's at our, the city of Whittier's attorneys right now. Uh I've been told today that they should be done with their review by this week, and I'll present that to Kyle. Um additionally, one last, uh not issue, but one last thing we're trying to do is a little bit different. The city of Whittier, we understand Girdwood, especially Girdwood Fire Department N E M S, has greatly uh assisted us in various events throughout this last year. One of the things, uh we've, we've started our budget process. And I know like last year, they had some issues with trying to get some uh rescue, it's set for rescue equipment of such nature. We've actually placed in our budget, we're still in our budget review process for the city of Whittier, but we've added twenty thousand dollars to help support the Girdwood Volunteer Fire Department for equipment that can be used uh not only in Whittier, but in Portage Highway, Aliaska area, as well as the Seward Highway. So we're hoping that comes fruition, so we could help better assist one of our community partners of Girdwood. And with that, that's about all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'm free to answer them.
Thank you very much for being here, Chief Ashay. Any questions from the board?
I just have a comment. Thanks, uh Chief. I I really appreciate the statue pulled together there. I know that, I know that's a lot of additional work, but that kind of puts in perspective what um, how much you guys have been doing. And and again, the the twenty K that you put in for the Girdwood Fire Department or or um you know, something, equipment that you that would benefit both departments is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah, we'll get a better idea when that comes fruition, probably by next month. Uh we'll have a better idea, but we did request twenty thousand dollars in our budget uh to assist Girdwood in critical uh infrastructure equipment for them.
I just touched on some things related to the renewal of the contract. Uh as Chief Ashay stated, the muni has finished its side of the review, and so it's within their uh Whittier's legal hands, just to finish their side. As soon as we get that final draft together, we will be having a special meeting with the Public Safety Advisory Committee um to uh review it and hopefully get their support, recommendation, recommendation of support. And then we'll be coming to G B O S to present that um that draft contract. Um nothing has substantially changed from what we've advised you as we've been developing this contract, uh just mostly minor legal words uh and phases. Um so we will bring that to you. And then um uh once we get hopefully a resolution of support from G B O S, then we will move it forward to both the assembly and the Whittier City Council in tandem. And we would like to have that all confirmed and completed by um no later than mid-December, so that when the current contract expires on New Year's Eve, we go right into the new contract um and move forward. So uh we're on pace where it is. We just have some couple, few, few more steps of finishing, and we'll be into the approval process.
Thank you, Kyle. Anything else from the board on that item? Okay, we'll go to Parks and Rec and Roads. Kyle?
Uh yeah, so uh with Parks and Rec, uh over the last month here, we've been uh very busy at finishing up several projects uh that we had to because of deadlines, and then finally getting contractors who could come. Uh it's been a very tough summer with contractors in the sense everybody's just been um maxed out, but these contractors showed up. We had the Alaska Trails come, and we finished up the project um on the Version Creek Trail. Um and a new interpretive sign was installed. I really like to give um a lot of appreciation to Margaret, who put that sign together. Um and it's a very informational sign. We hope it addresses the issues that we have been dealing with up there, at least to educate better people, people better on that. Uh a ton of trail work was done up there on the tread, lots of gravel hauled in. Um somewhere close to nine tons hauled in in five-gallon buckets. Um and new trail tread uh built in with reinforced with uh treated lumber. Um and we've gotten pretty much uh to the, almost to the falls. We do have one section that we will have to do next, and it's probably one of our most difficult sections because of the roots. Um but that will be for down the road. But it is a big improvement, and it keeps people in a corridor, and it's allowing for the natural vegetation to grow back up there. So it it really has turned into a nice conservation uh project up there. And then out to five K, we installed a new interpretive sign out there about Stumpy Faulkner um that was uh created uh by Girdwood Trails Committee members, led significantly by Barb Cruz and along with the Stumpy family. Um so if you go up there, you'll see that there. And then we'd like to recognize the Dugan family, who have donated four thousand dollars, um actually eight thousand dollars to install a new trail map out there at the same location, and then a new viewing bench uh so next year. So um they just gave us that donation last week, and so uh those projects will move forward next year. And we'll be working with Trails Committee over the winter to get a new trail map created for Girdwood that represents both winter and summer. Um with parks, uh we are moving along on several projects, and we're closing down several things as we head towards winter. And we'll uh, you know, first off, we'd like to say thank you to our um our caretakers in the park. Uh they have moved on for the winter, um but they most likely will return next summer. And then uh a huge thanks to Don Davis, who's returned and is helping us with volunteer duties um around the parks with trash removal and mud mitts and things like that. He comes uh once a week and helps us out there now that we've lost seasonal staff for the winter. Um and then uh with the new bridge, uh there is a R F P out right now through purchasing and for design. And so we're looking to hire a design uh firm. Uh we do have under retain, uh under retainer right now, Morrison Merrily, their advisor for us. They built suspension bridges for the U S Forest Service down in the Region One of the uh the U S Forest Service. And so they're on to help us be a client representative since they've been worked on suspension bridges before. And I met with them last Sunday, their head designer, engineer, and we walked out both sides and looked at the bridge, and he got a really good sense of the area, and we went up and down the cliffs uh so he could get a real sense for it. So uh the R F P proposals will be in by November first, and then a selection committee will go through those, and then we'll select uh the design firm who will lead the charge on designing the new bridge. Um so those are in action as we speak. Um switching over the roads, um we're still in rainy season conditions, as we've been since about July fifteenth. And uh the contractor is keeping up with grade in the roads and trying to do it in between little dry spells that we have. We were out today, and they were taking care of several uh different uh potholed sections. Um we did receive twelve hundred tons of E chips for uh winter sanding, and that has been tarped and and it's in storage and ready for winter. Um and the contractor is working on transitioning uh equipment from summer operations to winter. Um now, uh we do have a few little projects. We just finished one today with new guard or with new guard rail installed at the culvert there on um Crystal Mountain. And uh there's a few projects we have to finish up here, but uh we're getting through it, and we'll be into uh dealing with snow and ice uh before long. So uh uh as for our finances, we're right on pace where we should be this year um at this point in time, and we look like we should be within budget for all our different departments uh by year's end. Uh with the contractor for the roads, we we're at the, the contractor's been so maxed out, haven't got to their invoicing, but they're gonna do that this week, and we'll catch up on all our invoicing for the last two months. Um uh this week. So that's where we stand at this point in time. Any questions?
Guy?
Yeah, the the bridge proposal, um that's already went out.
The R P is out right now.
And is that restricted to state of Alaska or is that a federal, because of federal funding? Is it?
It's open to any, any design firm that's qualified to, they can apply, yes. Anybody can just apply. It it, the qualifications are determined out by. Anybody can just apply. The qualifications are determined out by the selection company.
And will your person that wouldn't look to decide with you, that company, will they help you to evaluate the proposals?
They are part of our selection committee and then they will be, at the request of the Forest Service, they will be part of the design review as we go through with the design firm that's been selected. So they are there to, one, be representative for us and really representative for the Forest Service. Because the long-term goal is for the bridge to be given to the Forest Service and then they maintain it for the future. And, and the Forest Service in this region has never built a suspension bridge. So they wanted somebody on board who knew a lot about suspension bridges and especially ones that have been built for the Forest Service. So they will be advising them, but at the same time, we don't want to limit the designer. We hope we, a designer from Alaska qualifies through the selection committee. Because it'd be nice to have a design firm in Alaska that has built pedestrian suspension bridges. There, there is none at this point in time because there's only one real true suspension bridge in Alaska. And that was designed by a firm from outside. So if we end up selecting a firm from the outside, either way, this company is going to be there to advise both us and maybe the design company about things they should be considering.
Thanks.
I also have a question about the RFP. When I read the RFP, the way I interpreted it was there are several statements that the community would like to suspension bridge and supports the idea of suspension bridge. But the way it appeared to be written is it's up to the designer to design a bridge, which doesn't have to be a suspension bridge. Is that kind of, I know where it's sort of side posted, but it's not a requirement. Is that the right way to look at it?
Well, in the end, the designer has to design something that the client wants.
Okay.
So, so we don't want to limit the designer to a concept. There may be something that we're not thinking of, and so we want to leave it open. But we have a pretty good idea as to what the community wants.
Yeah.
So that will be expressed once we select.
So while it's possible that something could come out of this process that's very different from what we've seen so far. It's somewhat unlikely, and if it did, it would probably be much better in the way we hadn't considered before.
True, but it also tells us if the design firm has really researched the site and understands what they're getting into.
Yeah.
So if they show up with a full steel structure and they want to bring it out there, that means they haven't really thought about the situation. So it gives us a perspective on what the design firm has done to understand the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle, for all of the updates on roads and parks and rec. Okay, public comment. Person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone here tonight for public comment? Line raising their hand. Okay, for old business, we'll go number 12 first, and that is.
I think we're down.
Okay, traffic calming measures for Timberline Drive and Mount Hood.
And I'll, I'll speak for this, but Cody Rice is joining us tonight and I'll want to have him speak as this is really the, so what we're trying to address is some is speeding issues associated with different neighborhood streets around here. And particularly Cody will be talking to Mount Hood. But we also have issues with Timberline and Aliaska View. And so in order to go through a process to get traffic calming measures put in, which could be in certain neighborhoods, speed bumps, others, radar signs, different permit structures, structures that help to slow down traffic versus enforcement, which can only be temporary at times. We have to go through these steps. And so let me just quickly just point this out so you're aware as to what we're pulling from here. Is that we have these requirements through Traffic Department and should come up here. That we, we show these, sorry. Something. Okay, there it goes. That we go through the step. So in order for the Traffic Department to consider making these, allowing these traffic calming measures, they have us go through these steps. And I know for those in the audience, it's hard to read. But the, the first step is really to come to the Community Council, which the GBOS is the ex officio Community Council, and request a resolution of support to Traffic Department for them to examine putting in traffic calming measures within our community. And, and what they will do is that they will do a speed and volume data collection, which would most likely be the spring or summer. And then they will review that data and then come back to the community and tell them what they think they can do. The one thing that we've asked for is speed bumps. And the one thing they have come back time and time again, they say we do not do speed bumps on gravel roads. And that has to do with the fact of liability. You can't secure those speed bumps. And if they break loose and cause damage, then the city is liable. So that's what they've told us time and time again. So, so tonight we're seeking a resolution of support from the GBOS for this. I'll pass it off to Cody so he can talk to the subject as well.
Hi, Cody Rice, 167 Mount Hood Drive. Hopefully everyone can hear me. I, I live on Mount Hood Drive, which is affected as many areas in Girdwood are by relatively high tourism and seasonal traffic from people using the mountain, short-term rentals, et cetera. I'm strongly in favor of this motion or resolution, as it were. And I would love to see this passed. I have personal experience with speeding on every single one of these streets, having been something that I've witnessed personally numerous times. All sorts of dangerous activity. I've called the police, I've spoken with Chief O'Shea. I've emailed them videos of people speeding in the community. I'll, I'll keep it short, given everything that's on the agenda. I'm, I'm sure everyone has personal experiences with this. I would strongly urge that you pass this so that we can get some quantification of what is going on in the community and get some measures adopted, whatever those may be. I would urge, and I know that the, that the sheet that Kyle showed suggests that the measurement is done in the summer. I think that's critically important, particularly for Mount Hood, is the, as the volume of traffic is heavily shifted to the summer, say June to August.
And I agree with him on that point. I think what we'll do to this resolution is we should add in a whereas to request the study be completed in the summer months. As, it most likely will happen in the summer months because the data that, or the research data they put out is the, is the sensors and those sensors will just get ripped out by Plaz, they'll do in the winter months. So, but we should be very clear about that, that we put it out for the summer months. And particularly in the months between June 15th and August 15th, I think that's some of the highest traffic time.
And for what it's worth, thank you to Kyle Kelly and Chief O'Shea for continuing to take my calls on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, for being here this evening and for all of your efforts in making your service area representatives aware of it and speaking for your neighbors as well. Because I'm sure we all see it, but not all of us make the efforts to call. Any other comments from the board?
Actually, a quick question, which I think Kyle can address. So Mount Hood is one of those roads that has multiple ownership, is that correct?
It, it's.
It takes, the state's ownership is which part?
State starts after Lake Tahoe. So you come down Davos, you turn the Mount Hood, you go down and the next intersection is Mount Hood and Lake Tahoe. And then just after that, that's the state portion. That's when it leaves the residential area and goes to the airport.
Should we be, should we be doing something in parallel to address? Because I'm sure some of the speeding, these people coming back from the airport, you know, they're speeding along the state section and then into the municipal section. I'm sure it happens in both directions. Should we do something in parallel with state?
Well, we could write a parallel resolution that we send to the state. I'm not familiar on their traffic calming policies, but a resolution is always going to give clarification.
We have obviously communicated with them in the past about Crow Creek.
Correct.
Couple of years ago and they got data last year.
Correct.
In their queue.
Yeah, it could be something that we pass along. Yeah.
Thank you.
If you wanted to, we could duplicate these resolutions and send them to both organizations.
Yes, that's probably a good start.
Carrie's got her hand up.
Carrie, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I'm not, not sure if I unmuted.
Now you are unmuted.
Thanks. I live on Mount Hood and the biggest traffic era is during the summer with all of the airport traffic. Folks speeding down there to quickly get to their helicopter ride that they are rushing to get to. And you know, it's, it's life threatening for Cody's children and our dogs and my grandchildren that live on that road as they come down the road and they're quickly accelerating to get to that airport. They don't even see the stop sign and they're just like, it's, it's just ridiculous. And I'm in fear of the life of my children, my grandchildren and my dogs. And so I really, really, really appreciate the time that you guys have given tonight to hear this concern. So thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Anything from the board?
Well, can we move the?
Yes.
Let's move resolution or the resolution in the packet.
We have a motion on the, approve the resolution on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second this, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any further discussion?
There was a suggested amendment of adding in the requirement that the traffic data collection is done during the summer. So I would add that as a amendment, or maybe it's a, maybe I can modify my resolution. So we pass this with the one addition of the extra whereas for the summer collection.
Thank you, Mike. Would you second that edit in the, or amendment, Jennifer?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I think we're ready for, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle, for bringing this to us tonight and everyone for the discussion.
Can I just ask, in terms of doing a parallel request to the state, should we do that as a separate motion and just?
Probably.
In that case, I move that basically the same resolution, but just with respect to Mount Hood. Because I think that's the only state road here. Again, with the same suggestion of a traffic collection during the summer.
Thank you, Mike, for that. Thank you, Jennifer, for a second. Any discussion on that resolution? Okay, do we have any objections to that resolution? Okay, we'll go by a sent then on that. Listen to the state. Thank you, Mike. Great to make that more thorough and better reasonable, I think. Thank you again, Mr. Rice, for being here. And we'll go to number five, discuss and vote on 2023 Girdwood Valley Service Area Nonprofit Recreation Grant Disbursements.
So tonight is when you make your determinations as for the amounts for each of the grants. And, and so we have up here is, correct me if I'm wrong, Margaret, but in this formula up here, we have what's been requested by the grantees. But as you guys were aware, we can only award $35,000 total. So this formula, when we plug in your numbers, then helps us to adjust it. So if you were to come in and add all the requested amounts, this is the amounts they would receive. So what we usually do is go by supervisor, by supervisor. And then we ask that you give us your grant award amounts in the order. It's up here. So starting with Little Bears Challenge, Art Camp, K U L, Glacier Valley Transit there for the last one. So, so that's what we're looking to complete tonight.
Kyle, would you repeat the order, please?
Oh, so it's Little Bears, Challenge Alaska, Art Camp, K U L, and then G V T Glacier Valley Transit.
Thank you.
So if you're ready, I could start with Mike and then.
Sure, I'm ready.
That route.
So I might get the order wrong. Little Bears, 9,500. Challenge, 6,000. Art Camp, 6,750.
Sorry, say it again.
Art Camp, 6,750.
6,750, okay.
Community Club, 6,250, 6,250.
Gotcha.
G V T, 6,500.
Okay, all right, thank you. Brianna?
I have for Little Bears, 10,000. Challenge, 7,000.
Okay.
Fine Arts, 6,000. Community Club, 6,000. And Glacier Valley Transit, 6,000.
Okay, Guy?
So that's Little Bears, 9,300. Challenge, 7,800. Art Institute, 6,300. Radio.
Sorry, sorry, sorry there. I dismissed you. 6,300?
Yes.
Okay.
That was for Art Institute, right?
Gotcha.
Okay. Radio, 6,800. And Transit, 4,000.
Okay, thank you. Amanda?
Um, yes, so let's see here. Little Bears, 8,500. Challenge, 8,500. Art Camp, 5975. Glacier Valley Transit, 5,500. Oh, sorry, K U L next. I skipped ahead. K U L, 6,525 and G V T, 5,500. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Jennifer?
Yeah, I've got Little Bears at 10,000. Challenge at 8,000. Art Camp at 5,500. Girdwood Community Club at 6,000. Glacier Valley Transit, 5,500.
All right, they all add up. And so the final award amounts, Little Bears is 8,258. Challenge is 8,729. Art Camp is 6,089. Community Club is 6,983. And then Glacier Valley Transit is 4,941. Excuse me, what did I say?
No, it's good. The numbers are.
We did our math correct. We will get our math right.
Math got right. So that's the way we stand. So we will move those forward for next year's awards for 23.
And thank you to all the applicants. It's not easy.
We do have to go vote. We do need a motion for you to vote. Second here. We're muted. We can hear your paper.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to trust the, I'm going to trust Excel. So I move that we award Little Bears, 8,258. Challenge, 8,729. Girdwood Fine Arts Camp, 6,089. Girdwood Community Club, 6,983. And Girdwood Valley Transit, 4,941.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Guy. Any oppositions? Okay, thank you, all of you. That passes by assent. And thanks to everyone for all of your time reading through these and evaluating and all the applicants.
Brianna?
Yes, Margaret?
We also need a motion for, for Valleys, please.
Oh, thank you.
And I will move that we award Four Valleys, 25,000.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Any discussion? Okay, any oppositions to Four Valleys hard funding, 25,000? Okay, that passes by assent. Thank you for reminding me, Margaret. Thanks. Okay, moving on to number six, Agenda Item LUC 2201-06, Girdwood Industrial Park Concerns, Power and Plating.
So I have no update on this besides talking with H L B staff today. And they followed up with a email. And their statement was, is H L B is currently working to stabilize and fully staff the division. As such, staff priorities have been focused on large upcoming land actions and day-to-day activities. As the division updates the H L B work plan, a more pragmatic approach to land management will be a result. As the division updates the H L B work plan, a more pragmatic approach to land management will be a result.
That's where we stand at this point in time.
Thank you, Kyle, for emailing them and reading that into the record. We also received an email today from Turnigan Tree Care expressing their concerns and frustrations with H L B and their summertime operations at industrial park and their lack, their emails with lack of correspondence from H L B to solve the problems that are there and there. And they're asking for our help with that. Any comments from the board?
I guess I've got a question of for most areas, for most areas, it's fairly clear who had, which supervisor has primary or lead responsibility. I'm not quite sure this is clear for industrial park. It could be land use. It could fall under utilities. Could we just have a discussion about who should take lead on this and follow up somewhat more aggressively?
Yes. Kyle, do you have advice for that history?
Well, what we're seeking down there is land use requests in the sense of getting power and flatlines. Just creating more organization for the remaining track. You know, the first five lots have been plotted out. They have power. They have all the utilities to them. The, the remaining track, which the Girdwood Service Area has a work yard in, is very unorganized. And, and we're still working off a temporary power source where all our equipment plugs in for the winter. And it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a tight area. And now they've opened up more leased lots past that area. So we're trying to fit our equipment in tighter so they can get by. And the road that they go by, as explained in Turnigan Tree Care's letter, is, is very subpar. It needs a cap of gravel. And H L B is limited because they don't have contracts and the ability to do land improvement. And just the backstory on this, before the big change in leadership and, and staff at H L B, the, the last land manager was working aggressively to resolve the issues down there and also open up more land for leases for industrial use. And their focus was, at that point in time, they realized they were not landlords. They were land managers and that their responsibility was to sell land. And so they were looking at selling the industrial park for somebody to privately develop. And then part of that sale would then retain the parcel for municipal use, which both the fire department and us use down there. And then hopefully we could plot out that lot and then which would be easier for us to bring natural gas and power to that lot. But that has all been put to the side now and, and that's in that statement. Really, I think that statement, what you read in between the lines is that Holton Hills is the priority at this point in time. And getting focused on these is they just have a lack of staff to focus on it. So, and I know, I do know, I work with the land managers there. They're very good people. They're just trying to work through. There's really just one person there, Emma. And then right now she's split between two directors. And so she's just trying to carry a workload. And this isn't her, she wasn't hired to be in this area. She's not a land manager. She was more of a G I S person, but she's left holding all the cars and trying to keep things together. So it's very frustrating. And they knew that you guys would be meeting with the municipal manager next Monday. And so that's, that's where they stand at this point.
Okay.
Okay, does that clarify a little bit?
Unfortunately, yes.
Uh, Jennifer? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think it, I will, unless we have another volunteer, I will, I will try and get input. I will lead this particular charge and try and get input from the other landowners and permanent owners down there. Lease holders, I should say, in permanent ownership.
Well, I, I did have one question on the statement about lease agreement. But maybe that's just a detail that with their lease, do they mean it jeopardizes their equipment? That their lease is with the equipment or leases with probably the land?
I think it has to do with the land.
Yeah, okay. Jennifer?
Sorry, thank you. I just had a quick question. I don't see that letter in my packet. Am I missing it? Or I'm just curious where I can see a copy of that letter.
The one from Christina?
Yeah.
So there's a revised packet that I put up. We had quite a few late additions today. So there's a revised packet online that you can take a look at, or we printed us
Okay.
with additional information here in the room.
I think it may be in this one, but you probably, you can find it. If you can't, just let us know. We'll forward it on to you.
Okay, all right. I, I think maybe that's the easiest thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, it'd be helpful to read that. Crystal?
Just a quick clarification, that the leases, well, there are no leases that are beyond that phase one. They're permits and they're annual permits. And I'm sure now that I say that, maybe that'll spark some memory about the Bob Wolf conversations and not being able to build a business when you only have a year-long commitment from your landlord essentially. So that's just one thing. I do agree that the road needs to be improved. I also think that this is in their purview to help address some of the infrastructure that's required for community needs. And then also, I, I, I don't know why the message got relayed that Holton Hills was the priority. In, in my opinion, it's certainly not the priority of the community. I would say that the industrial park and South Townsite have priorities that, that overweigh the, the priority of Holton Hills. So for whatever that's worth, that is my opinion on the matter. And again, there would be permits and not leases. Thanks.
Thank you, Crystal.
The way I, I just wanted to comment, the way I took your comment, Kyle, was the H L B is saying their priority is Holton Hills. Not we believe our, the community's priority is Holton Hills, correct?
I think so. I think it's a department thing. They see what, what.
So I agree with Crystal. I mean, it's consistent.
Correct. And Crystal's right. It is, I say permits, but it is leases. It is permits. And D B S is on the same thing, or the Girdwood Service Area is on the same thing with a one-year lease that we have to renew each year. And the municipal organization on municipal land.
Okay. Anything else there? Anything else on number five, six? Okay, thank you, everyone. Number seven, update on G B S Resolution 202011, Resolution Against Racism in Community Forum. Guy?
Yeah, real quick update on that. I've been working with the Alaska Humanities Forum on hopefully putting together a program here in Girdwood and for the community. And they came back with me not too long ago with a couple of options for some community meetings that we can hold. So I, I didn't have the time to get it into new business, but we'll, we'll see it in new business next G B S meeting. And get input from the community during that time. But I, I think both options are very well thought out and would, would benefit our community in a lot of ways. So anyway, I think next, we'll get this in the new business next meeting and we can discuss it further.
Okay.
I, I would, I, I would like to find out, just to verify before we get far along. So G B S, we can fund this under parsing rec? Do we want to? Is that the plan going forward? Is there any disagreement with that?
I couldn't think we had any, by recollection, it's when we went through this exercise, when we started talking about it. We didn't know exactly what format it was going to be. So it wasn't clear whether it would fall under one of our service area powers or not. I know we did have discussions with Four Valleys about whether they should help impart, part of that. So it may be something where it comes into place. It may be something we can fund under recreation. I'm not sure. I mean, I think it depends on the exact formats that you propose.
Well, we're not talking a huge amount of 45, about 2,500 to 4,500 is what it is for one session or, or multiple sessions. So some to keep in mind when we, when this, we introduce this as new businesses, you know, do. I think we need to do this and just coming up with a funding mechanism. Just keep that in mind, go for it, okay?
Thank you. Yes. Number my pen here. Number eight, update on H L B response to Holton Hills recommendations. And then legal opinion re-H L B process of RFP development agreement for Holton Hills. Wants to start us off.
I'll start. I'll start on this. We obviously touched on this earlier, but this is where the, this is where we'll take action if we choose to. So as we touched on earlier, the response we got from, or the response we received from Mr. Trombley was, I think, just said that there is no current mechanism today where land can be transferred to G B S. I don't think it actually went any wider than that, did it? I think that was actually the, more or less the only thing he answered, which wasn't quite the question we asked. There are probably many different solutions apart from that, including them holding it sort of in escrow or something equivalent until an entity can be established or, or determined. There are probably other places that could be transferred as well, but there are definitely more options than we didn't actually explicitly ask for. So that maybe, we may get a revised letter which answers that, or we may end up asking that question directly of the municipality on Monday. But clearly, the, the information we have at the moment is that none of the changes or requests we've asked for have, have been committed to in any form. That's where we currently stand. So in our earlier letter and resolution, while we didn't make a formal decision that we wouldn't support, we definitely, we definitely indicated it was very unlikely we would support the proposal as it stood at that time. So if there are no changes, I suspect we'll be in the same position. We could make some formal action tonight. I personally think the better thing to do would be to have a formal action on Monday when we've had, when we've had a response in person from the personal virtual, but in an actual meeting from the municipality. And we will have the response from the Holton Hills Passing Advisory Committee as well. So my suggestion is we, we, we hold the information we have now and have a formal action or consider a formal action next Monday on our next, on our next meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else from the board on subjects so far? Guy?
I do, I have a question. Did that, this letter, I, I think the request from H H A C was land or money. Was that correct?
Yeah.
And didn't it, wasn't part of that letter? I don't know if we need to take money off the table or not, but I mean, it seemed like there was some pushback on the money being given to G B S in that letter. And you know, going forward, is that the path we want to pursue?
Well, I mean, I agree with what was said in the letter and as far as it went. I mean, it, it answered the very narrow question of today, can land be transferred to G B S and can money be transferred to G B S? The answer is no, you can't. I agree, but that isn't really what we asked.
Correct, I know.
Is there a mechanism for getting it in the hands of the community eventually, is what we actually asked. And the very narrow answer of can I do a specific thing today is what we got an answer to. So it definitely doesn't. It implies there isn't a great deal of interest in finding a solution. But it doesn't say directly. It doesn't say no. It just doesn't attempt to solve the problem.
Right, that letter kind of puts it right back on our plate, you know, for the way.
But again, if you see another version of it, maybe it'd be clearer what happened.
Maybe, yeah, yeah, okay. I, I do, I do question the money part of it. You know, whoever Girdwood land trust or somebody may be able to manage that land. Had the media feel better about somebody managing land as opposed to money. But that's my only comment.
Thank you, Guy. I had something on the topic of number eight for the plating board meeting, which is on November 2nd. And I am curious if one of us could email the board, the plating board? Or do we make, so that the, maybe a letter that we've already sent, but it's submitted to their packet? So all the plating board members just have some kind of history of where we've been since April or June? And then in addition to that, maybe we can be present at the plating board meeting or not on November 2nd. But they take phone call testimony too. So I'm willing to send what we've already kind of formulated in comments or letters to the plating board or their representative, or like, they give out email addresses for their board. So that way, at least they're more educated or knowledgeable about some of the background and where the community, where G B S stands for. But their action is happening, I think, whether or not Girdwood supports the project. The plating board is dividing the land as everything.
Yeah.
You've been, yes.
So the, the plating action that's being held by the plating board in November is for H L B to split the one tract into five tracts. Now they're doing that for the purpose of then transferring or sending it on to the partnership between C Y Development and, and H L B to do that development. But the, the action itself is really just limited to that, to that split. And then the assembly, the assembly will then have to say it can be transferred. So this is a necessary step in that process. But I, I agree with you. I think the, the right thing to do is communicate to the plating board all of our official statements and actions and probably put a cover letter explaining the process. And while, you know, this is a step in a bigger, in a bigger project, and we do not see that, or we do see maybe by next week, you know, how that, how that project is or is not in the interest of the community. So I would say a response to the plating board and a response to H L B Advisory Committee for, is something we should discuss on Monday.
Oh, yeah, question or comments anymore from the board before we go to in the room or online? Okay, I'll go with Lisa. Please come a little closer to the mic.
Yeah, I do believe that the plating board is expecting input from all of us because Connie did go to that meeting and ask if she could have a work session first. And then she said, oh, and if you don't, 40 Girdwood irate people are going to show up. So I think they're expecting that and they did a lovely job of deferring to planning, so.
Thank you. Uh, Crystal, go ahead.
I'm curious to know where the, the response letter from Mr. Trombley is, is posted somewhere.
Yeah, I have it here. I'll bring it up because we were waiting for the revised letter to come. But we'll just share because it become a discussion point. Let me just do here. And we'll just post it tonight because it looks like we're not getting a revised letter at this point in time. So. It's just these three paragraphs here. People can see that. I can make it bigger if needed.
Online, let us know if you can see it bigger. Couple typos.
And can I do a quick follow-up? I guess it's not a question, but a statement. And I think that I was already under the impression that G B S cannot receive those things, which is why I believe so firmly that we need an entity to hold the land, which is why I've spent two years working on this. So I think that now people understand the reason as to why we need it. And I, it would be very, very helpful and bring a lot of legitimacy if a member of G B S would participate on the Girdwood Community Land Trust Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Grace, your hand is up.
Thank you. I have been watching this Holton Hills development closely for the past 21 months because it's in my backyard. And the M O A and H L B process has numerous flaws and questionable legal actions that have only been magnified over the coming, over and over to our community on this project. It's very unfortunate this process has all these flaws and that we have been dished, in my opinion. In my experience, most community developments have lots of community support. This project has none. It's ridiculous and embarrassing to have the only support of this project coming from the developer and their attorney. Both self-serving actions. I applaud the L U C, G B S, H H H C, and the hundreds of community members of Girdwood for going the distance on this matter. I applaud the L U C, G B O S, H H H C, and the hundreds of community members of Gerwood for going the distance on this matter. You will be asked to come forward and to reinstate the community's displeasure on this development in the coming months to come. The buck will stop at the Assembly of Anchorage. I agree with the other speakers tonight that G B O S needs to vote on this matter and vote no to Holton Hills development from the H L B. Please make a motion for this action. Go back to the drawing board with the H L B and meet with the community on the needs that have come forward with this dialogue. Your punting action tonight is no action and not representing the community you serve. Keep it simple. Have the message be strong. Community lands equal community benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grace. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Sounds like, do we need to move to legal opinion?
Actually, can I can I just respond to something Kristen said? It's actually, it's my response as a question to Kyle rather than. So Crystal said, and the letter says that, a letter from Adam says that they're going to service area car or land. And I agree with him in the sense of, you know, we don't have any power to deal with housing at the moment, which we are obviously discussing later tonight. But we do have parts and rec powers. We do have roads and maintenance powers. So there is a way in which some of the land, for example, dedicated parks who actually, I mean, the M O A owns dedicated parks, but is it owned through the service area or is the service area the manager? How does this actually work? And the same with with roads and drainage areas.
So the parent organization is the municipality of Anchorage. And then different portions of the the organization is funded through different mechanisms.
Right.
So the service area is is a funding mechanism for this section of land, which is owned by the by the whole of the municipality as we work under that umbrella. So in this case, you know, I think what was misinterpreted here was that the request from the housing group was that land be set aside and then an organization over the next given span of time, I think with the the long range was 10 years that this organization would get developed and that the funds would be encumbered. And so that when the Real Estate Department, H L B, and this organization came together, which could be the Gerwood Land Trust or it could be a different entity, they would take on the ownership of the land through agreement, similar to what's maybe being negotiated right now for the Little Bears to manage that land for workforce housing. It wasn't that G B O S was going to take ownership of it.
Yep.
They were going to probably be a key member in the development of the group that would eventually become the steward of that land, just like a land conservation group or something like that. In the end, municipality probably would still own that land and maybe there would be agreement eventually worked out that the that transfer of ownership would go to that that group. But that group would have to be stood up and be solvent and be able to work to own that land in the long run.
Yes. So in the same way as we have, as the parks are, you know, the dedicated park land is managed by the service area.
Correct.
But it's owned by the municipality and whichever whichever beat in the municipality it's allocated to is kind of irrelevant.
Correct.
Owned by the municipality but managed by the service area.
Yes.
And if we had an analogous power, the same thing would apply there.
Correct.
What we got an answer to is that we got an, we got a, we had a question answered, which we did not ask. We didn't ask that question. We got a very narrow question, answer to a question we didn't ask and didn't really want the answer to.
Correct.
And the representatives, it's, you know, there's a misunderstanding somewhere.
Yeah, and I know the representatives, what I understood, the representatives were very clear about, we want you to hold on, we want.
Exactly.
We want the developer will develop this land. They will parcel out through a plating process. And those parcels that are meant for high density housing will be retained by the municipality. And then an organization has stood up through Gerwood, as called out in the in the Crow Creek Plan, to manage that land, to develop vertical, to put workforce housing on that land. And then they will manage that workforce housing and and whatever purpose that is. But that would all have to be worked out with H L B.
Yes.
And then over time, H L B would say, okay, how about we give you a 50 year lease at no fee to hold that land? And then maybe through that process, we figure out how to transfer the land to you.
Yeah, that's a tough question.
Very.
So it's really about whether it's H L B formally altered or some other part of the municipality altered. It doesn't actually matter. So, I mean, we've really just confirmed that this this letter doesn't really address what we asked at all.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying and that discussion. And when I personally, when I read the letter, it opened with him stating that he asked a question that the two people couldn't answer. So he thought he should find out the answer, but we all already knew that that answer and it's not a question we were asking.
Correct. Grace has her hand back up.
I think it's a, it was up the whole time, but Grace, is your hand still up? Or I'm sorry, is it a new hand? I watched it.
Okay, let's go on.
But thank you, Kyle. Okay, anything else on number eight? Basically, see how Wednesday goes and get something ready for Monday.
Yeah, I mean, just that I, when we get to item 17, I will be recommending that we have, you know, effectively an action put on or at the end of our quarterly meeting agenda.
Thank you. All right, moving to number nine, follow up on, sorry, Margaret.
Did you want to address the legal opinion portion?
Legal opinion, H L B process of RFP to development agreement for Holton Hills. I think, is there any change in that, Kyle? Or?
No. So we had, you know, that request was with Adam Trombley and that was never moved forward. And I did hear through Assemblyman Salt that that a Gerwood Board of Supervisors didn't have the authority to ask for that request. So.
Oh, that's interesting. That's not my understanding.
Yes. That's, please, I know.
Should we keep that on the agenda?
We'll keep it on if you like.
We'll, we'll make that a specific discussion point.
Okay.
Yes.
That's new for business law, or maybe not. Okay, now number nine, follow on Aliaska Highway Interchange Review and Action by G B O S. So I know Jennifer's done a lot of work.
If Jennifer is here, I'll let Jennifer.
Yes.
Good.
Hey, Jennifer.
Can you start?
Anyway.
Sure. Well, and Mike, you can fill in with what I skip. Mike and I had a lengthy and we thought productive meeting with D O T, which we talked about at the last meeting and we were waiting on this proposal. And when this proposal arrived, it did not change the things we thought it was going to change. And so as you can all see from the picture, it didn't actually change much. So we are now, well, well, there's two things. One is, I don't know about Mike or anybody else, but I feel like I still don't have an answer to why a diamond design is not feasible or more precisely whether or not we've really fleshed that out and really tried to make that work, rather than this trumpet extending into the wetlands. And so given that this is what we have, the other thing then is, do we object or do we? Well, yeah. Mike, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I took the, I think I left a little bit color. I think the the discussions, the the main topics of discussion we had when we had the follow up meeting with D O T is they explained to some extent, why a diamond in the, definitely why a diamond would not have worked with the original Aliaska Highway alignment. Why it would be very difficult for a diamond to work with the adjustment to the Aliaska Highway alignment. And that they would need more space between there and the bridge, or they would need to put a second bridge in in order to make a diamond work. My understanding was there was going to be a little bit more explanation about why a diamond didn't work, and we haven't seen any of that. They have moved the bridge in their latest proposal. They have moved the bridge about 120 feet or so further west. So if it was as close as they suggested that for the diamond to work, then I don't know how far off it is now because I think they said it was, you know, 100 or 200 feet different is what I recall. So I'm still not clear why they rejected the diamond. My sense is that the priority for continuous movement of traffic was taken as the highest priority and all else is subsumed under that goal. And I don't think that's the correct goal. I don't think the community, I don't sense that the community thinks that's the right goal. That the the visual aspect and the size and the amount of land it uses, particularly to the south of the existing alignment, is is probably the most critical thing. We also discussed formalizing the attachment to or the the secondary access through Toadstool. And the the actual location of the trumpet itself was probably the worst location because it was across the pond. So that's kind of what they did respond to. They moved the junction slightly to the, or the bridge slightly to the west and put in a a junction with Toadstool, which would be gated. But otherwise, I agree with the with Jennifer. I don't think, I I don't think that the while there's been a lot of discussion about this, I still don't think the fundamental question we were trying to get an answer to why a diamond doesn't work has been answered by satisfaction. It's clear that they're not, they don't want to pursue that solution. So this is what we had.
Jennifer, your hand up.
Thank you, Brianna. I should have added one more thing, well, actually two about their justifications for not doing the diamond. One is, there is an additional expense because you have to have a divided highway. But that is what we're trying to move to in the long run anyway. So there's this argument that while it might be more expensive in the short run, that's what I thought we were aiming for in the long run anyway. And then there's also this concern, as Mike said, about flow of traffic and getting up to 65 miles an hour by the Glacier Creek Bridge. And that, I think, speaks to what Mike is talking about with this focus on flow. But I don't know that the Gerwood community is as focused on trying to make sure that traffic whizzes by right there at 65 miles an hour.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying those, Jennifer. So just on the map, I know you've said it twice with west. So the green overlay is the revised.
The, yeah, the gray, the gray was the original element and the the light green is the revised alignment.
Okay. And I was under the understanding, I think, that this was the most expensive option, but there weren't really prices given on all the other options or let's say the diamond that had the most community support, if there was one with the most community support. And if it had two bridges, we don't know right now if that would be still less expensive than the trumpet. But I think that would matter.
Yeah, the issue with the second bridge was that the bridge that's been, the bridge was upgraded and put in there is not large enough for for a full loaded highway in the future. And if that was their goal, then there would be a second bridge or at least a larger bridge put in there.
And they did, they say that with the trumpet design, that allows for the future build of divided highway.
My recollection, Jennifer can correct me if I misunderstood, is the the span of the bridge is designed to allow future divide than for a length of highway.
Does that sound right, Jennifer?
Yeah, that does sound right. And also, the one, the other thing that they like about this design is the ability to keep the existing highway open while it's being built. And I think that that figured pretty prominently in their decision as well.
Oh, right. Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Time wise, I think we we have the option of action now or action in our next regular meeting. The the deadline is to get something, a formal response before December. I forgot what it's called. It's, I think it's, I can't remember which group it is, which body, but they're going ahead in December. Unless Kyle has an update.
Yes. With that, and I'll share it here, we did, we received this afternoon, right before the meeting from the Planning Department, that they have received a application packet from the D O T as part of their contact sensitive solutions. And they are going before the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 5th.
Correct.
For a hearing date. And they are seeking community council, which would be Gerwood Board of Supervisors' comments by the 14th. Now, we have many times submitted after that due date and and then they still include in the packet. And I'll reach out to Elizabeth Alphabete and let her know that you guys are scheduled for your regular meeting on the 21st. And a comment will come right after that so that she can include it. So so they they do have a date set now to go before P and Z.
Thank you, Kyle.
And then one other thing I feel like I should disclose because it's come through my attention through working with the U S Forest Service, we are through this project trying to find a way to connect the Gerwood the Gerwood Bird to the Lower Ditterod Trail and get it away from railroad tracks. Right now, there's a social trail. It takes you right by the railroad tracks. And so through this project, D O T has had great meetings with the U S Forest Service. And with that, they have brought in the railroad to that discussion. And the railroad has, within the last two weeks, has expressed that they would like to see Toadstool be removed as public access and remove that crossing from the railroad, which means diverting all the traffic back up through the residential neighborhood that would come out of the D O T yard and the DTIP and the D O T. The fire department is very opposed to that. They have the importance that Toadstool, and I'll show it here when I pull this up. This that runs right over here and then takes you over to the D O T yard and the railroad depot serves as the only secondary access to the valley. So if the bridge was to have an accident on it or there was something that happened and cut the bridge off, we would have at least Toadstool that we could go through. As well, D O T accesses the yard on a constant 24 hour basis, especially in the winter for sanding and plowing. And so if all that traffic was redirected up through the residential neighborhood, that would be D O T trucks going through there every half hour to reload with sand right through residential neighborhoods in the middle of the night. And then as well, the D O T or the depots there. And so all the commercial bus activity that is either going up to Aliaska Resort or to different portions of the valley would be funneled to that neighborhood as well. And the third thing, which is kind of crucial, is that the armory is there for all explosive for avalanche control. And so if there was a, something to happen there, there would only be one access to the D O T yard. And the armory is actually built into the hillside, and so it could affect the access getting down that way. The railroad's response was that they could leave emergency gates so that we could cross over. But I know that's a very hot ticket issue, and so I want to be clear with that. The railroad said they would speak with stakeholders about this decision. And and so I said, I know the community won't be involved in this this decision making. So I just want to let you be aware of that as well.
Thank you, Kyle. Maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but how would people get to the depot? Other times.
They would have to drive through the, what do you mean if they closed Toadstool? They would have to drive through the neighborhood. Have to come up through Gunny Stack and the Down, that way.
Okay.
And the same for D O T.
So what the railroad is asking for is to close that crossing.
Close that crossing.
Total.
Yep.
Okay. We have quite a few hands, one online for a while. M H, guess?
Yeah, that's me, Matthew Harvey. Sorry.
All right. Thanks, Matthew.
I guess I could have gone back after and changed my name, but I was just wondering. I I've talked to D O T about this a little bit as well. It seems like, I think you guys are spot on with the prioritization of, you know, keeping the traffic moving on the highway. But is what's your guys' take on how set in stone their design is currently with this refined recommended alternative, or whether, you know, there's any opportunity for change between now and the next step?
Jennifer, your hand's up. So Jennifer and Mike can both respond to that, but Jennifer, you want to go ahead?
I get the sense that this is their final design.
I agree. We we pushed pretty hard for, I think we pretty clearly said that we were very unlikely to support the trumpet, whereas, you know, a diamond design, we were, you know, depending on the details, we were much more likely to support. And if they came back with a trumpet, we'd probably end up saying no. I mean, you know, the community, as the community would probably not be behind it. And they came back with a trumpet. So this looks like, it looks like, you know, this is what they're going to push one way or the other.
Yeah. This wasn't our favorite design. We tried for a couple of months to try to, and they weren't very responsive to us. I mean, we're going to keep trying to talk to them more and more about it as as it goes on. But, yeah, I think I think maybe they're looking for tweaks now, unfortunately. yeah, I think I think maybe they're looking for tweaks now, unfortunately, but.
And just to, Matthew, when you said, just to clarify, I wasn't talking about maintaining flow on the highway. I was talking about this design prioritizes continuous flow into or out of Girdwood. So a diamond design doesn't slow down the highway in any way. It's the it's the trumpet. It's really to make sure that traffic coming into Girdwood can still continue to move at speed into Girdwood, at least up to the roundabout.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's it's not on a sewer highway.
Um, one thing about here, it seems it seems like this design is kind of built for Girdwood to grow too. But I don't know. There's just a couple of things. I don't, this is one thing that I don't know, we're going to keep on, even though in the next few months, we will not be a representative of the area any longer. This is one of my pet projects that I won't, that I'm going to keep following as much as I can, just, you know, anything we can do from here on out.
Thank you, Matthew. And any other comments in the room or the board come forward a little bit?
Just gonna ask if these maps could be on the online packets because I keep looking for them because I wanted to show people. Because they're.
This is now in the revised packet. That's up on.
It's another item we received today.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Guy.
Yeah, just, um. Yeah. So after your conversation with DOT, I mean, they have a meeting on the fifth of December, then we can reply, but like, how imminent is this? I mean, are we talking, is there funding put aside for it? Is there, has the environmental study been done? I mean, it's going to be huge. You know, do they have?
They got thirty five minutes.
A mechanism to, you know, bank all these wetlands? Like, where are they at actually on pulling the trigger on this?
I I think it probably depends on the, it probably depends on election results in November as to whether it's at the top of the list or not. My understanding, and I think the the strong message was given by our friends at DOT, that this is very much a directive from the top of the state.
The governor's interested.
The governor is interested in this being a project.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I believe go into the STIP, the statewide transportation improvement program.
Very near the top. It's one of the highest priority projects.
Yeah, the STIP, when when the project like this comes in, like I think, like you said, the sewer highway improvements are just in general, along with the corridor expansion along, like closer to closer to Potter's Marsh. Those are kind of his higher priority things. So I think as soon as it gets concept selected and through select and to define and execute or further find construction, execute construction. I think as soon as they get the concept selected, they want to go as fast as possible. So, yeah. And dependent upon election results.
Which then will lead to the EIS and then all the hydro studies and everything after that, because they know what design they prefer so they can focus on those areas.
So there's still time for them, but given how elections go, I mean, this is.
So as of four, we could say that we will come with the, we've heard from our community at the special work session we had and the presentation with DOT and the engineers. So the feedback from the community hasn't really changed, but we're just gathering a little bit more information from their mics and Jennifer's meeting last. But to keep this item as a topic tonight, or do we move to November to have a final stay in November before the December, oh, November fourteenth or December fifth? Deadline. November fourteenth is in what Kyle just opened.
Yeah, I would prefer to, I would prefer to take formal action at our next meeting, at our next regular meeting, if we're able to do that.
And I'd like to learn more for you guys about the trail and all that as well. We have meetings planned between here and the twenty first.
Great.
November.
Okay, thank you. And then Terry, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say I was really excited about the diamond design. And I'm sorry, I have not been seeing a lot of attention, but this one is not what I was thinking we were going to do. And I don't think it's in the best benefit of Girdwood. I'm really excited that there's going to be upgrades because I know there's been a lot of fatalities and air fatalities. But I don't see that this design is in the best interest of Girdwood. So whatever we can do to go back to the diamond, I'd really like that.
Thank you, Terry. Uh, we had Betsy Codell. Your hand is up.
I'm wondering if it would be who of us to write a letter to the editor of the Anchorage Daily News or somehow publicize this to the greater Anchorage area that this is the the plan? And to kind of spread the word that this is just overkill to more than just maybe the people that live in Girdwood.
Thank you, Betsy. Any thoughts on any of the comments from the board?
Lisa, sorry.
Yes, mentioning, because Guy, you asked about time and they said in the meeting that they were looking at five years. So that was their timeline.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll keep gathering information and listening to ideas. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No.
So this will be an old business or will have some kind of resolution in our next regular meeting?
Yeah, let's just.
There to that. Is that cool?
Well, what I was gonna, yeah. So can we actually, just for to actually do action, can we just formally postpone this item to our next regular meeting?
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to next regular meeting for action. Do you have a second?
I second that. That'll give us time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any objections to the motion on the floor? Okay, we'll go with the sent on that. Thank you for the discussion. All right, we'll move to number ten. Discuss ideas for DOT Community Transportation Program, Alternative Transportation Program and Reconnecting Communities Pilot. Our C P discretionary grant program. Amanda.
Thank you. I just saw Matthew's hand go up and I don't know if he wanted to comment to the last item or if it was about this.
Um, I just wanted to make a real, real quick comment. It, like, four minutes ago, it popped up, five minutes left in your meeting. So I just wanted to, just in case we drop off, I think, I'm not sure if it'll automatically drop us off at nine PM or not, but I just wanted to bring up, I saw that.
Thank you.
It won't.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, I've been working on this DOT Grant Opportunities, the Community Transportation Program and Alternative Transportation Program. There is a initial screening that is due, application which is due October thirty first. And have drafts. We're just waiting for budget to come back mostly from the Western. And these are projects that include the Vale Timberline T paving, the Arleberg Bike Path repaving and rehabbing to put in better structures so that it doesn't frosty so badly and maybe will maintain its structure longer. And then Three Fish Culverts, one on each Mount Hood, Lake Tahoe and Davos. And I was going to ask for support for pursuing this funding through GBOS. But it sounds like maybe we should start from the respective committees, subcommittees first. So going to Trails Committee for support for the Arleberg Bike Path and land use for the Vale T and Fish Culverts. I think the Fish Culverts are fine because we have planning done. So it's at the like, we could move forward with it already. We just, once we get funding. And then once we have that support. I don't necessarily need it for the initial screening, so I'm just going to start working through those committees and then come back to y'all.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick question. Is the intent to, for the paving of Timberline and Vale or beginning of Vale and beginning of Timberline, is there intent to do CTP, to apply for CTP for that and then TAP for the, for the Destined Safe for the Bike Path?
Um, I'm confused. Sorry.
But you, there are three different programs, I think you mentioned in terms of funding. One is CTP, which is the Community Transportation Program. That, is that the one that would be, you'd use, you'd be applying for for the paving work on Timberline and Vale?
Yes, and you can do two projects for the initial screening. Because we, I think, actually, to be honest with you, the Vale Timberline or, yeah, Vale Timberline T section is not far enough along probably to get funded. I would be surprised, but this is a good place to start that conversation. The Fish Culverts is more likely to move forward, in my opinion, because we have planning and like a whole planning documents done. And it's just a lot further along. So, but we're going to put it forward.
So they're the two for CTP. And then the Bike Path along Oldburg would be under the TAP program.
Yes, and we haven't identified a second project for initial screening for the TAP program.
Uh, I have a quick question. I think, Amanda, when you said talk to the Trails Committee, which one would you do for that?
The, or Bike Path, but honestly, like, that's already an established path. And it needs repaving, so I don't know. I don't know. If our trails plan was done and like, like, whatever, gone through assembly and adopted, then I probably wouldn't even go to the Trails Committee for support because it would be in the plan. And that's considered community support. That one's a little gray for me.
Just on the October thirty first due date for the screening part, and I can talk to you about that outside of meeting for for wherever you go. So, uh, that's all.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Betsy Penel, do you have a question or comment?
I do have a question. For the paving of Timberline to Vale, are you just talking about a little apron at the bottom of Vale? Or paving all the way from the beginning of Timberline to Vale?
Um, I would defer to Kyle for that.
Yeah, it would be paving all the way from the end of the apron right now in front of the church to Vale and up to the top of Loveland Hill in that section.
Do you think that's going to encourage people going to Virgin Creek Falls to start speeding through there?
Well, that would be part of, that would probably be a part of the whole design work is to see what we could do for speed control in that area. And that might lead to maybe future traffic calming measures, which could be speed bumps.
Okay, thank you.
Any other on the board? Okay, I see a hand from Mark Eiseman. This is DOT.
Hi, so I didn't want to comment on the last last issue just because I hadn't, I hadn't been briefed on any of the stuff you guys had brought up. So just let you know. But as far as funding for CTP and TAP, I'm your contact at DOT, Amanda. So if you want to go over any of these, please contact me. I'll be back in the office on Wednesday. And also to let you know, FHWA just released the NOYA for about two hundred million dollars for Fish Passage. It's a nationwide competitive grant mainly written for like Washington and Oregon. But I think we could probably sneak some projects in. And I'll afford that that on to you when I get back in the office on Wednesday. But if you have any questions about your projects, please feel free to reach out to me, okay?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mark. I'll email you to set up the time.
Perfect.
Yeah, include me in that too. I'll join you, Amanda.
Great. That would be super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for identifying yourself and bringing these to us months ago. We appreciate it very much. Okay, anything else on number ten? Need to read any of this or leave it? The resolution that we have in front of us?
What I understood is we are going to have this discussion later. So we postponed until next month or is it going to be after that?
Next month. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Number eleven. Discuss training options for GBOS and committees. Jennifer. Open meetings and Act and Ethics Work Session Scheduled.
Let me actually have Margaret start on this, if I could.
Yep, she stepped out, but I'll handle it. She, we have a scheduled work session for you guys with the municipal lawyers for Open Meeting Act and Ethic Work Session. And that's Monday, November fourteenth at twelve PM. So it'll be virtual with the legal staff there. And so they'll be conducting that training at that time. So, yep, that's that's ready to go. Jennifer, you want to talk about Paul Matarian?
Yes. Actually, I don't have anything that needs to be acted on tonight. But I do have some leads on two different options. One would be training just the board and the other would be a community wide training. And it seems fairly reasonable, but I will have actual prices and differences for next week unless the board has any questions. I think that's all I've, all I've got for now. Or sorry, next meeting. I'm sorry, next meeting.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions in the room? Okay, great. And thank you, Margaret and Mike, for following up on getting to the Ethics Board to set up the training. Number twelve, traffic, we already did. Thirteen, update on status on public safety contracts. Kind of already said that.
We already discussed it. We're in the process and we'll be coming to you with special meetings to get approvals.
Okay, thank you. Number fourteen, Agenda I and LUC, twenty twenty three liquor license renewals in Girdwood. Request legislative public carrying of any licenses. Request must be made by resolution no later than October fifteenth. Stop reading there.
So we have a list of licenses here and I think we'll just get to the letter. The letter in here, didn't we? That is somewhere here. Here it is. So it's standard renewal of licenses and it's Double Muskie Inn, Girdwood Brewing Company, High Tower Pub, the Asian Bistro at the resort, Speedway Express, which is the gas station, Spoon Line, the Pond Cafe, the Sundry Shop at Alieska and Two Trees Bistro. This is the renewal of their license and it is requested that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors either give a letter of non objection or a letter of objection to these renewals so that they, there's some sort of voiced input from the community. And so that's what's in front of us tonight. And these all passed the Girdwood Land Use by unanimous vote at their last meeting last Monday.
So I'll look into this. So these are biennial, are they every other year?
Every other year.
This is basically half, roughly half, half of the year licenses we have in turn. So we have a letter of non objection here. I can read it if you wish, but because it's in the packet, I don't feel I need to. But I will move. Yeah, I will, I will move this, this letter.
Okay, the letter has been moved. Do we have a second?
Perhaps someone on the line.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. I totally agree with this letter. Are you sure we have? I'm sure you did your due diligence, but nobody's left off this list for this, but biennial.
I'll pull it up right here so you can see the Girdwood listing. Which is.
I saw the spreadsheet, but I'm sorry.
Here it is. So on the blue sheet, and you can confirm, we have a Double Muskie Inn, Girdwood Brewing, High Tower Pub, Asian Bistro, Speedway Express, Spoon Line, Pond Cafe, Sundry Shop, Two Trees Bistro. Matt?
Yeah, all those are listed. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Guy. Any further discussion? Okay, any objections to the letter of non objection?
I think we should do it.
Let's do a real common vote then.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Ed. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, great, thank you. Number fifteen, Gerwood Cemetery, request for G B O S Resolution of Support for Cemetery Proposition on Spring Municipal Ballots. Tommy O'Malley is here. If you would come towards the microphone, Tommy.
Tommy O'Malley, Box five ninety, Gerwood, Alaska. I would add to this resolution of support, uh in the first paragraph, um it says uh twenty fifteen voters in Gerwood passed an ordinance allowing the Gerwood Board Supervisors powers to tax property owners to establish, maintain a cemetery in Gerwood by a overwhelming majority of sixty-eight point seven percent of, that's the, instead of, or input number.
There's a different version, Tommy?
Oh, well.
Because we updated it this afternoon.
We had a meeting this afternoon, and I guess it was updated, so that's.
It went unprecedented instead of overwhelming majority.
Unprecedented, yeah.
I like, didn't use new words.
What's going on, won't get out anybody. Okay, uh, any questions?
So for those of you who um wouldn't know, the Cemetery Committee met today, and they did make the original change, just to clarify the number um that the vote passed by in two thousand fifteen, and then a theory. A second to the last paragraph, the last whereas statement was changed from what was originally in the packet, because uh we felt that it was important to put some costs. Um, what we know is that Phase One of the Gerwood Cemetery was originally estimated at four million, but we knew that this is going to be going through O M B and um and that things have changed in the time since two thousand nineteen, so we put a a placeholder of five million for the Gerwood portion, and we don't have numbers yet for what Eagle River or what the renovations and improvements at the Anchorage Memorial Park will cost. So those are the, the changes from the draft that was in the packet.
I will, uh, on behalf of the Chair, I will uh move this uh resolution.
Thank you, Mike, uh, we have um a move for this resolution, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Guy, any other discussion? Thank you, Margaret, for clarifying from the meeting today, and Tommy for being here and all of your work on this committee for years and years.
It seems like eternity.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Kyle, please.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, Kyle, thanks, Tommy. All right, moving on to number sixteen, Agenda Item L U C twenty-two-ten-dash-zero-six, Discussion for Defend Edition of G B O S Powers to Respond to Housing and Economic Stability through Vote in the Spring twenty twenty-three Municipal Election.
Right, so I will speak briefly to this, but I'm actually gonna suggest that this is kind of a bit of a complex beast, and uh I don't think we can necessarily do it justice just tonight, so um I'm going to suggest we may consider uh holding a work session on it, so that we can get into the gory details, um discuss it in far more detail, and then be in a better position to, you know, make a recommendation at the end of that. Um, but I will speak to it briefly now, at least, and take any questions. So, this idea has been bouncing around for a while, um and the Holton Hills experience has kind of crystallized um a fundamental problem, although I put some slides together, I'm not going to go through them. The um, the essence of this is every other um resort community, um, every other resort community I'm aware of, and I've spoken to quite a few, um, they have the powers in a city, um or a town or an equivalent municipal entity. Um, often they're doing things in combination with a county, um but they have their own distinct powers, and they have their own distinct responsibilities, and we obviously in Gerwood do not, we're part of a um a county-level organization, the municipality of Anchorage, and because it's a large city, ninety-nine percent of the population is not in Gerwood, one percent of the population is, so it's very hard to get um focus and to get the municipality to take concerns which are distinct in Gerwood uh seriously. And when we do get that, there's, you know, there's a lot of positive things that happened. Um, uh generally, we are better off if we can um have the power, any power we can have uh and hold that locally. So, one way of doing this is through service area powers, we have done this for purposes of providing our own fire department, our own fire services, our own police services, our own um, you know, parks and rec and rental maintenance, and as we just heard, our own cemetery uh services. Cemetery is kind of the most analogous to this, because what we did to cemetery powers was we, we basically took the responsibility for pushing forward this project, um and by making it a service area power, we could spend um our own money uh to actually push forward a design and structure, but when it came to actually the big expenditure, uh that goes out into another funding source, so in the case of cemetery, it's bonds, um we could have got grants to do it, and in fact, we may end up with grants, I don't know, but there are other, there are other funding mechanisms to do the sort of big lift, but the, the purpose of the service area really was to solve the problem, do the, do the planning, come up with um a, a way to implement it, and to rather wait for the municipality to solve the problem for us, to sort of take the, do it ourselves. So this idea is the same, but for um economic and housing stability. Um, and the reason it's termed economic and housing stability is we know that because of the different circumstances in Gerwood from the rest of the municipality, um simply building more housing is not a solution. Um, that may work elsewhere in um Anchorage, and it probably will, it definitely works in other communities, but when you have the dynamics of a um of a resort community, simply building more housing does not necessarily lead to any more housing for people who live in the community, it typically leads to more housing, um which are used as vacation homes and vacation rentals. So there is no mechanism currently in place to promote community housing. This would give us a mechanism to put the structures in place, to take the lead in the, in the work, and to put the structures in place to um to prioritize and to put policies which will promote community housing. So that's kind of the, that's the brief um outline of it, there's a lot more to this, and there's um, there's a lot of ways in which this solves particular problems we are facing, which other potential solutions don't. Um, and I would like to go into more detail, but I don't think we can do that easily in this meeting, so I propose that we hold a um session just on this topic, something in the next month, if we can schedule it.
Thank you, Mike, uh, Jennifer, your hand is up?
Uh, yeah, I just, I didn't know if we needed a formal motion, or if that was a motion right there, that we do a work session on this, because it does sound like a really rich topic.
Yes, it did kind of sound like a, a motion, so.
Ah, Jennifer, we, we need to do.
Make a motion, Jennifer, while you're on.
Sure, I'll make a, sure, I'll make a motion that we uh have a work session uh to study this in further detail.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second? Well, sorry, Mike's second, any further discussion?
I have a question, so, you know, this, I think this is a, a good idea, and, 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 you know, it'd be good to say, boy, would, would it be nice to have this in place when we wrote the proper guarantee plan or whatever, you know, so um it's not going to solve our whole hills thing tomorrow at all, I don't think, but I, I think it'll put in place something for long term. No, I, I agree with it, um, but, you know, given that, it, I see this going in perpetuity, just like, you know, so we need to consider the cost of this, so maybe during your work session, we will um have some um ideas of what funding, you know, what we needing to support this.
Yeah, so the, 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 what we would need to do is um make a formal proposal and get the Assembly to eh make this a valid proposition for the voters of Gerwood to vote on in April, so that would be the, that would be kind of the formal steps, and then if the voters say yes, we then have a way in which we can uh, we can sort of, we, we have that power now, so it starts answering the questions which are that, the letter from Adam Tromway said, we do not have the power now, well, this would give us the power, um and it would give us a formal uh stake in a lot of the discussions, so it would be at a very different position to the way we've been in Holton Hills, for example, Holton Hills discussion.
Yeah, and I think something needs to be put in place, you know, for, you know, practicality's sake, you know, have an idea what it, it would have cost for you.
Right, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you for all of your work on this, Mike, and for the idea of work session, I think that's a great use of the time dedicated to an important uh change and shift in power to. Kyle, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure, uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, so we'll probably do some kind of doodle poll, Margaret?
Yes.
All right, number seventeen, finalize M O A G B O S Quarterly Meeting Agenda, it's scheduled for October twenty-fourth at four P M, in-person attendance at this community room, Gerwood. Uh, we have the meeting agenda draft right here, do we need to suggest any edits, and then, Margaret, if you have ideas already, please go ahead, or if you have something to say.
May I just speak to the first one? Um, M O A, uh, the municipal manager and the legal department have been uh very helpful, and they've gotten through their process on the contract, um, and I do have a direct uh avenue right to the um, the municipal lawyer, uh, once we get a uh input back from the lawyer side, so uh we're on that path, I think the biggest uh step next will be the approval path through the Assembly and getting that in their rotation, um, but the municipal manager is pretty well aware of it, and they understand the importance of it, so I don't know if we need to take up time discussing this with them at this meeting. Um, so if you would like, I, I suggest that we remove it, um, so it allows you to have greater time on some more probably mediocre uh subjects.
Good. Any thoughts? I'm happy with that.
Yeah, agreed.
I agree. Thanks for doing that correspondence behind and front of this meeting and municipal manager.
I'd also suggest that item number two should be expressed more broadly. It's not just the, the legal review of the process. We do want, I think we do want clarification in that, but I think we need to have a discussion of the broader Holton Hills project, just to get feedback on any remaining issues.
Right.
So we could, we label the, we could label the subject just Holton Hills, and then put all the things we might discuss in it, yep.
Brief.
And I mean, do you want to start with your first bullet point, the community support for the project?
Yes.
Okay. Or status of.
Yeah, or change.
Status of.
Status of community support for the project.
Well, I've actually asked specifically whether there are, um, whether there are any changes um supported by the municipality to the project.
Okay.
And then community support follows that, if the answer, the first thing is no, that can be answered.
Okay.
And then the other thing is.
Say that again, sorry.
Okay, so I think the, the first, the first bullet point would be um an update on any changes that the municipality is supporting for the project, so we've suggested a bunch of changes. What is the status of the municipality's response to those? And then, following that, we can then touch, we can then discuss the community's um support of it, and then I would suggest we add, and then we can do the other points that are under Section Two now, and then I would suggest we add another item at the end of the agenda, which would be any formal action we wish to take.
Sure, okay.
Thank you, Mike, for those suggestions for the bullet points, number two, I agree. Anything on three or four from the board? Oh, go ahead.
Not on these specifically, but um I, I know, you know, our highway interchange chair is all ninety percent federal funding, state funding, D O T, but we did write a resolution to the Muni about this, and do we need to mention it at this meeting, it sounds like D O T's meeting December fifth, this is all going toward, it seems pretty imminent, um, is it worth bringing it up again, I don't know, but uh.
I think I asked that last meeting.
I would probably advise not, the, the attention of the city manager is not on that, and they're not going to put much energy towards that project, whereas, I think, really, this meeting, what I think we've learned through these meetings is you have to really focus in on what the municipal manager was, actually has action and power to do. Otherwise, they just, they, it kind of, they don't really.
Yeah, no, it, it would be nothing more than a, another cry in the dark, you know, I mean, but um, and I, I agree, right, Kyle? Okay.
Thank you for asking, so, uh, Jennifer?
Just wanted to ask, uh, are we sure about having item three on the agenda before we have our work session, or is, is there a reason why we need to do it earlier rather than later?
The, the reason I think it makes sense to have it on here is, it's a, it's a formal discussion with the municipal manager and any other staff she wants to have there about this particular topic, so if they, you know, she, she's going to be, she's going to uh listen to this, you know, we're going to be presenting this particular topic to her, although we may not have all the details, it's a, it's an introduction, and I think it's, I think it is appropriate, especially because, you know, in part, this is, this is the directive we've heard from the H L B Director, to some extent, of Gerwood needs to perform, you know, make formal commitments and solve the problems itself.
Right, but we've argued before that that's possibly the cart driving the horse. I'm just curious if we want to talk to the city before we've talked to ourselves, which also seems premature.
Margaret, you had your hand up?
Uh, I think resolving this.
Okay.
First.
Well, then, there are quarterly meetings, so the next one wouldn't be an appropriate time for a ballot item, and then it's up to the Assembly, too, so, well, I, I see your point, Jennifer, I think we should bring it up, even if it's not clear to everybody.
But one point I would make is that uh if this concept that you guys are discussing moves forward, you will need legal assistance, you will need the legal department to be involved, so I think maybe that helped last time with the municipal manager, uh, I mean that, because then when I need legal assistance, I went directly to her, and she um secured the appropriate lawyer for what we need to complete with the police contract.
Agreed, I mean, the, Wallace could be done through purely the, the Assembly, it makes much more sense to go through the administration and the Assembly.
Oh, Margaret?
Okay, so what I was gonna say before is that um perhaps moving that item ahead of the Holton Hills discussion, so that there's been sort of some groundwork late for the Muni manager, and, okay, so that would put item number three and number one, because number one went away, and then the Holton Hills discussion, and then cemetery bonding, and then coming back for you all to discuss Holton Hills action.
And may I suggest, maybe you just put cemetery all ahead that, so that if you guys do finish that Holton Hills discussion, you can go right into action discussion, and then everything's tied together, and that way the cemetery's not kind of caught in, probably missed in the middle, like.
And maybe a little bit of a softball.
Yeah.
Sounds.
Maybe we put the cemetery first on the agenda.
I like it.
Yeah, okay.
Cemetery, housing and uh economic stability, Holton Hills, and then action on Holton Hills.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle and Margaret, for information, any further discussion on this, so we can continue at the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to new business, Agenda Item L U C twenty-two-ten-dash-zero-five, Alias Resort License for Glacial. for Blasher Lounge, number six-zero-nine-five, item scheduled for Assembly hearing on November ninth, approval the twenty-first. Wes online or, I know he did.
I'm there.
Soccer.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not Wes, but uh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, would you like to come up and speak to it, what the plans are for the resort?
Well, would you like to now move apart from what you have already there? So I'd be interested, are any questions?
Sure. Um, well, I could just briefly describe it. There is a new license request for the expansion of the existing alcohol license to uh a new uh room being developed on the eighth floor of Aliaska Resort. Um, and uh, and so this is a, a procedure to expand that license. And this is built, this is coming off the existing liquor license there, or is this a whole new license within it?
It's an expansion of the existing license.
Expansing, yep, so um, and this would be a new uh exclusive lounge on the eighth floor for the residents or the customers staying on the eighth floor um up there. And so, um, and you could probably better describe it, I can, as to what is the changes happening there.
Yeah, so um, we're doing a much needed renovation for their uh resort. We're starting from the top floor. Uh, our uh eighth floor will become our um, kind of like a, not, uh, an exclusive lounge with uh special upgraded rooms. So this lounge will be uh uh available for those staying on the eighth floor and they have the use of the lounge. We're looking at uh, it's not been finalized, but we're looking at uh having a special concierge available there within monitored by the like you would have in some upscale luxury hotels, uh special uh reserve functions for breakfast, uh some snacks during lunch and afternoon uh available for guests along with uh controlled liquor available for some guests during that change.
Thank you, Sasha, for being here.
Of course.
I have a question.
Please.
And because it's an alcohol license, I guess, uh how is it normally uh patrolled for under age? So they're in a special room with their parents or in different places? How, how are they carded?
Well, you will have access to uh, first you can check into the hotel if you're not eighteen, but um also especially for liquor for twenty-one. Um, obviously anybody taking liquor will have to be carded, so we're not going to give any access to anybody without somebody from uh the staff who's entitled to have uh tabs uh what we call um uh licensing. So they'll be able to check their license uh or their um IDs to make sure they're verified that they have their, they're the correct age for liquor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, so this was um talked about during the last meeting, and it will be a twenty-four-seven, um, it'll twenty-four hour open for liquor, for alcohol. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Okay, that's what, that's what was kind of good.
No, 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 absolutely not. No, I mean, we can serve at certain times.
I didn't think so. So it would fall under normal.
Absolutely, absolutely. All other times it'll be strictly under uh lock and key, so.
Sure, yeah.
Isn't it twenty-three hours? About one hour, you know, sort of, I don't remember.
Well, then the municipality.
Yeah, I know, correct, correct. So like, I, I think, I can't remember exactly uh uh Wes would be able to, but it's like it's ten or eleven during normal and during the weekends on Sundays, it's uh, I think it's twelve, so you can't stop until, and then it ends at one or two o'clock, so.
Okay, don't, thanks for, I, I swear.
Safety L three.
I heard this last meeting.
No, I, we have no interest of uh risking our internal license in any shape or form, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I misheard that at land use lawsuit. Okay. Any other questions for Sasha? Okay, we have a motion.
Yeah, so we, I think we were, we weren't exactly clear. There are a couple of ways of doing this because this hasn't been to this, the second land use committee meeting. We can either pass this resolution now, um, or I think it's too, is it too late if we pass, if we actually pass this after L U C and do it on the twenty-first? It is too late, isn't it?
It's too late.
Yeah. So yeah, so again, there's a letter of non objection in the, in the packet, so I will move that.
Okay.
Be conditional on, well, it will include the result of the uh land use committee. Vote.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for the clarification. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion?
The only thing is, uh, I think in this draft, it, um, yeah, sorry, this draft, I think here is, just needs two things built in. Yeah, that's right. Okay, so yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, Kyle, could you please do a roll call?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington? Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, number nineteen, this item L U C twenty-two-ten dash zero-seven, Girdwood Community Club, E, Blasher City Radio, K E W L F M nine-eight-eight-nine, request for L U C recommendation of GBOS letter of non objection or resolution support continuation of this multiple land use permits.
Hi, I'm uh Louis Leonard. I'm the president of the Girdwood Community Club. And this is a request by the Girdwood Community Club Incorporated, doing business as Blasher City Radio, K E W L, F M eighty-eight dot nine, for a resolution of support by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for a continuation of its revocable use permit uh in Girdwood Park with the municipality of Anchorage. For over ten years, the club has had multiple leases for this municipal land and we requesting continuation of this agreement with the municipality of Anchorage. We have five-year um leases, as it were, uh incremented in yearly renewals. And our five-year is up in February. In the past, we've had a good relationship with the municipality real estate department, which is under the Heritage Land Bank. And with the turnover of municipal positions and the resulting loss of collective memory and history, we strongly believe that the municipality needs the strength of the community to again state its support of this endeavor. So we are requesting a recommendation of the land use committee and submitting to the Girdwood, Girdwood Board of Supervisors a request for resolution of support that we can pass along to the municipality of Anchorage. More information about the club and its past land leases are contained in three attachments that you all have and is, are posted online, uh entitled Girdwood Community Club, land lease where we are, and for your consideration, a draft of a resolution of support, along with the Anchorage Municipal Ordinance A O number twenty-twelve dash thirty-six, which includes A M one-ninety-three dash twenty-twelve, the Assembly and mayoral permit approvals.
Thank you. Uh, I did have a question. I know you just said every five years, but how come it says twenty-twelve in this one? I know it's an old one, but.
Um, well, that's when this uh legal process was, was finalized. So twenty-twelve doesn't necessarily fall in the, in the five-year system there.
Okay.
I think we, we had to start, I think we were in the middle of a, of a um, of a lease at the time and um we uh went through, we, they, the, the real estate department realized that they, they needed um this resolution from the, from the Assembly in order to continue it, so.
So before next, or at next meeting, when we have it as old business, would all these dates be the same or they'd be up to, sorry, the script?
So I think if you flip further in, I think you're looking at um some of Louis's backup information.
Okay.
But if you look a couple of pages further, he has a draft of a resolution that he's.
Okay.
Promoting.
Yeah, you, you have a draft of the resolution and the dates should be correct on there.
I think they are.
Yeah, the dates of the, that I, that I gave you for the municipal items, those were the, the ordinances of authorization for this entire process that don't need to be gone through again.
I see.
And hopefully, you know, in, in the past, we haven't never had to go through it again because it's just, it's there, it's encoded in, in uh, in law, as it were, and okayed by the municipality. So um it, by, by any recollection, this should just be, and has been in the past, an automatic five-year renewal. But like I said, things being what they are in the Muni, it's hard to say how anybody's going to react to this when it comes up in February. Well, we've had a good relationship with the, with the uh real estate department and it's been pretty easy in the past, which is, is more.
Thanks.
Is this, is this the same one you presented um last week during the land use committee?
I'm sorry.
Is it the same, is this the same um resolution you presented last week?
Yes.
It just, nothing's changed, right?
Nothing's changed.
Okay. And this is the first time that you've asked for a resolution, just, just um, you, and I concede the need to, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to ask for it, for pen all, but I'm just curious, typically you don't ask. When this comes up, it's probably not relevant, but um, this is your first time that you've asked for this resolution to be put before the Muni, has it?
No, no, it hasn't been. Um, five years ago, we didn't ask for one, but ten years ago, we did. Um, this is pretty much the same resolution. The only thing that was added was the last um where I asked, which is the uh recognition of the municipal ordinance. Um, and, and also twelve years ago or so, when this process first started, we asked for one back then.
Perfect. Now, I love the history, just like your.
And they all look pretty much like that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you, Louis, for coming and joining this late. Okay, look forward to next month. Number twenty, agenda item L U C twenty-two-ten zero-eight, request GBOS resolution of support for designation for Girdwood at large as an overlay zoning district as outlined under A M C twenty-one dot zero-four dot zero-seven-zero, Brett Willbanks.
Uh, hello, uh, thank you. Yeah, so I did uh introduce this um in the last L U C meeting as new business. And, and I think it just sort of dovetails into what um Mike Edgington was saying a little bit earlier. And I would really like to probably move this up into that special work session to explore it. And I'll just quickly try to summarize sort of the intent of introducing something that describes Girdwood as being uh unique. And, and that is this push towards uh getting a handle on the availability of long-term rentals. And this path uh would allow perhaps definition of things to uh support those efforts that Mike introduced um for community housing, but let's say not put it on the back of every property owner uh by paying property taxes. Um, I would suggest that if we were to define Girdwood as its own uh district, and there may be a couple of mechanisms for this that we could explore in detail uh at this work session. But if we were to define Girdwood as being different and distinct, it, it's potential that we could use uplifted bed taxes locally uh to support those types of community housing efforts instead of strictly relying on increased property taxes. It just appears that uh since the issue uh is being caused by, you know, say, uh short-term rental um activities that competes with long-term rental housing, and that's, that's the problem, then we can mitigate it uh through one of two ways, uh limit short-term rentals or tax short-term rentals. And inner, these types of tools, like a zoning overlay, will allow us to do those types of things. So um, I guess with the um, with the body support, I would uh, I would hope that we could move this type of discussion into that uh, into that work session, if at all possible.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd just say, I, I, I understand what you're trying to get to with this, Brett. We obviously have a discussion about it. I see this is distinct from the um, the issue about a um, a service area power. I mean, this is, you know, how, whether we, whether it uses overlay districts or um the other, because Girdwood is already its own separate district within chapter twenty-one, uh within title twenty-one, sorry. Um, so whatever mechanism we use, I agree with the principle of there has to be some framework around um short-term rentals. And I think I agree that the, the best way of doing this is to do it for Girdwood, rather than try and do it for the whole of the municipality. Um, I think there's, we probably differ in what our preferred mechanism is, but that is a, I would say this is still a very distinct thing from the um, from the service area power itself. And uh, the service area power definitely requires a, a popular vote, so it's a different mechanism as well. Um, so I would keep them distinct, uh but I agree with the general principles that you're aiming at here.
Uh, right, yeah. Thank, thank you for that, Mike. And I guess, I guess that I would hate to um prejudicially presuppose an outcome for taxation within undefined housing authority at this point. I would hope that we could have all options on the table, especially when considering taxation, where placing it in front of the entire municipality as a property tax is one thing. I believe uh zone, describing ourselves as a different zone and then seeking an uplift to the bed tax is something entirely different. And it might be best if we seek some legal advice from the municipality as we explore these options rather than presuppose that it's going to be a vote for property tax.
Right, the um, I think there's a, there's a misunderstanding here perhaps about what the proposal is, which is why we're doing a work session.
Okay.
The, the proposal we discussed earlier is not a, um, an area-wide or a municipal-wide uh service. It's a service limited to Girdwood alone. Um, and I agree with you that um the what tax rate is, is a different discussion. Um, and it does not presuppose that there cannot be other mechanism of funding. In fact, it really requires there are other mechanisms for this, for most of the funding, um, which can include, you know, other, potentially other, you know, taxes or permit costs or other things, but that's a huge discussion and that discussion is somewhat premature. The, the mechanism you're proposing here is um, again, I personally, I s, I, I don't see how this gives us any advantage over changing uh, over changing um that chapter nine. Um, and I think the opinion of planning is that changing chapter nine would be a much easier, faster process. But I'm not sure I completely understand their argument either, so, but it's definitely something to discuss further.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I don't want to belabor everybody, uh but the idea is that um trying to define short-term rental regulations within chapter nine would be problematic, but applying uh these regulations that are not yet defined could be generally described as being precluded within a zoning district. And so um I, it, it requires more work, obviously, um to figure out the best mechanism to do this within the code. But I don't believe that title twenty-one, chapter nine is an easy lift, especially since you've noted that we have no Girdwood area plan in, in effect. And, and so there is, that's a dead end. It's just a dead-end path.
Yeah, I mean, the, the same problem occurs whenever mechanism we use. You have to, you have to, if there is not a comprehensive plan that uh speaks to this particular requirement, you have to justify it for each change. So, yeah, but I agree.
Okay, Jennifer's hand is up. Jennifer, go ahead.
Uh, this strikes me as a uh complex topic and, well, I understand that there are distinctions. I disagree that it's fundamentally not related and I would uh like to make a motion that we do include it in the work session. I believe that these two uh proposals are uh, that their, their Venn diagrams overlap a little bit. They are distinct, they are different, but I don't think we need to hash out all those differences now. I think it would behoove us. These are both complicated. Maybe we can't fit it in one work session, but sure would be nice to try.
I, I think there are many other topics. If we're going to include this one, there are probably four or five of the topics we should also include. And I think that will get. I, I think there are many other topics. If we're going to include this one, there are probably four or five other topics we should also include. And I think that will get
Well, I'm sorry, but through the chair, through the chair, are you the chair?
I am not the chair. I was just, I was responding to the gesture I just received on the side. Sorry, Jennifer, you probably couldn't see that.
No, I couldn't see that. But I find that this is a lot of class conversation. So I'd like to stay focused because it is late. And if we can simplify this, could we, could we do so?
Okay, Jennifer, I heard your motion. Would you like to make it a formal motion?
Yes, please. I would like to make, make a motion that we include this in a work session and we can, we can start there. Doesn't have to be comprehensive, but I think that these two plans both have merit and potential for solving some of our issues that have been highlighted by both planning and zoning and our dealings with H L B.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion? Not hearing a second right now. The motion dies, but that doesn't mean we can't talk about it.
Yeah, can, can I make a comment?
How's that gonna make a second to make a comment?
If it's about this, you need to second it or, or the motion dies and then.
Okay.
Okay. I, well, the motion is no longer. Guy, do you have something else?
No, I, I I don't know if this needs to go into old business next month because it's such, I, you know, Brett, I appreciate the time you put in here. I was at Land Use Committee last week or whenever, just a few days ago, and you presented there. I haven't had time to look at it fully and I, I don't want this to die just because we didn't include it in that work session. So I don't know how we keep it on topic or if it goes to H H A C and is brought up and, and kept alive. But I, I do I do see these at this point. For myself, I need to learn more about it. And I, I don't think that work session's the place for that, but I don't want it to die. So I don't know what we do going forward.
Thank you, Guy. I believe by process, then this would continue as old business on the G boss agenda, but it should continue within the next L U C meeting. You know, I'll take this back. I did chat a little with Dave Whitfield in planning. I think that there's maybe several different ways to skin the same cat, if you will. And so trying to understand the best way to do it with an eye towards what these future efforts are is important. So thank you, Guy. We'll continue working on it. Earliest I will.
Thank you, Brett. And Kyle had his hand up.
No, I was gonna say, it's part of the process.
Okay, he's gonna emphasize that process as well. So thank you for your time with that. I do appreciate it. Mike, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I agree, Brett, that this, I think there, there's a lot of different things where we're, we're coalescing on what the purpose is. And we're just trying to, we're, we're exploring mechanisms to get to that purpose. And this is another good example of that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Can I also make a motion to extend our meeting by ten minutes?
Move to extend the meeting by ten minutes? Do we have a second?
Well, sorry, by fifteen minutes, two, ten past ten.
Fifteen minutes from now?
Yep.
To ten-ten. Do we have a second?
Cheryl's second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any objections? Okay, we'll keep rolling. Number one, T one. Rescue Board Director's request for G B U S resolution of support for CERT funding from emergency management funds not to exceed two thousand. And then there's twenty-two kind of separate, but I'll ask for that one first, Kyle, for number twenty-one.
Guy, did she speak to you about these at all?
Through an email, so I can't really speak to them very knowledgeably.
She's seeking funds to help with the CERT, the volunteer rescue team. And I think what we can do is leave this on here as old business. And I need to talk with her further about this because I don't know what the emergency management funds are. So unless that's some other fund that, I don't know where that's coming from. So so, so we can ask more questions about that, have more detail for you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I can put effort into that and
Correct.
Provide feedback if it goes into old business for sure too. So whatever, but yeah.
Okay, great.
I, I think it could be pushed onto in double business and
Yeah.
Any, okay.
Yeah, we'll have more information at the next meeting.
Okay. And then twenty-two, requests for G B U S resolution of support for community wildfire protection defense funds.
Yes.
For brush truck.
So they, the A F D has received quite a few, quite a bit of funding, a large sum of funding for community wildlife protection defense. And and so they are seeking funding out of that and they would like a resolution of support for that. And she will have more details in the next meeting as to the cost, the price for the new brush truck.
Would you like me to author these resolutions or is Chief Weston going to?
Chief Weston will, but you probably should work with her on it.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys. Mike?
And would this be, sorry, for the brush truck, that would again be a vehicle owned by the service area?
It'd be owned by the municipality, yes. Yes.
For the service area.
Yep, because it's their funding. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay. Reports. I'll let, I'll let, I won't read all that unless you.
No, the reports are in the file. So if anybody wants to read them, they're there and they'll be in the meeting packet.
We should read them, obey them.
Well, I want to say the library decorations are fantastic.
That's cool.
If you haven't seen them, and that's in the report. They did a lot of effort this year, the new stuff. And there is a contest, I guess, for library decorations. Okay. Anything else? Entertaining to adjourn?
We're to adjourn.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, everyone. And minutes spare. Thank you. It's Kyle and Margaret.
Good night, everybody.
I need you, Tim.
That's excellent. That's the best. That's the best.